Welcome back for day two of this marathon sessions. I get to start you off this morning, so hopefully everybody's wide awake. We're going to start this morning with recycling division, page 203 in your books. As we've talked about in the past, recycling division services really strengthen neighborhoods, improve quality of life sections of our strategic plan. Primary goal of collecting recyclable materials from our residential properties and educating residents and property owners on proper recycling to reduce the amount of waste going to the landfills. Data, Wisconsin continues to provide partial reimbursement for the recycling division's costs through the recycling grant program. That program at the state level is funded through a portion of landfill tipping fee. So a portion of all landfill tipping fees go to the state to fund the recycling programs throughout the state to reduce the amount of waste going to landfills. Yard waste drop-off site is operated and managed by the recycling division as well. Recycling and sanitation division continue to be among the highest rated divisions in the annual citizen survey. Due to some of the changes with internal service funds that we're going to talk about a little bit more later on, and Russ and Mark, I don't know if you got into that at all a little bit yesterday? I didn't catch everything yesterday?
Yeah, we started out with some introductory remarks. So council should be familiar with the trials and tribulations and the process of going through both EAM and the internal service funds.
Okay, yeah, I missed the first half an hour yesterday, so I would have missed that. But we'll get a little bit more into some of that stuff. And also with the object code changes that took place earlier this year in the software, there were a lot of, our previous accounting codes were combined into, several combined into a few just to reduce some of the confusion, but unfortunately that makes things look a little bit differently. And it gave us a few challenges looking at our history because we did lose some of that history in the software, but we still had it in all of our hard copies. So we were able to recreate things as best we could. Some of our key accomplishments with the recycling division, yard waste drop-off site continues to see consistent usage. Total number of visits through September of 2022, we're down a little bit from 2020 and 2021, but as you may remember, especially in 2020, as the COVID-19 pandemic started, we saw record visits to the yard waste site as people were home and doing a lot of yard work and cleaning up. So I don't really want to compare us too much to 2020 and 2021 because I think those are the top two years of yard waste drop-off site usage that I've seen in recent history. Bob?
Yes, it has been. We run about 52,000 visitors a year, and last, that year of 2020 was over 60,000 visits that came in that summer.
So we're down a little bit from those years, but we're still kind of on par or on average with where we've been historically. So continuing to see good usage at that site. For the year, our recycling material collection is slightly below average with the previous three years, but again, that's factoring in two of our highest years we've ever had. So I think on average, our residents are continuing with a fairly good, consistent use of recycling and keeping those materials out of the landfill and out of the waste streams. Some of the budgetary impact of recycling division this year, thankfully, the Winnebago County Solid Waste Management Board is keeping their handling fee for recycling materials at $5 per ton for 2023. If you'll remember, two years ago, that was $15 per ton. So they reduced that last year and they're holding it steady this year. So that was good news for us. As we get to sanitation, the news is not so good there. So I'll save that for that division. One surprising note, I guess we could say is, we actually did receive a commodities check from Winnebago County Solid Waste for their, for their share of the recycling commodity sales, and that totaled $121,398. We went into this year not expecting anything, so we got a nice pleasant surprise from Solid Waste Board on their recycling commodity sale. We're anticipating only about 40,000 next year as those sales have dropped off significantly through the, through the course of 2022. So we're anticipating about 40,000, but it was a very pleasant surprise to get the 2021 commodities check earlier this year. Other notes that we have, we are anticipating the retirement of one operator that is shared between sanitation division and recycling division. And recently, we've also been informed that our sanitation manager has decided to retire a little bit later this year. So I would, I really like to thank Bob for his many, many years of service to the city and to these two divisions, and he's done a tremendous job with these two divisions and these programs. And I'm going to miss him myself, and I know as an organization, we're going to miss him, but I wish him well in his retirement.
Thank you, James.
We're going to be missed, for sure.
I'll be still checking those numbers.
Perfect.
Not leaving the city, just leaving the organization to spend some time with family. So Bob, thank you, and we are going to miss you. So with that, if there's any questions on the recycling side of things?
I'm sorry, James, did you already say how many tons were diverted from the landfill?
No, I did not have that total number. Bob, do you have a total number?
1,150 tons were diverted from the landfill. And with that commodity check, that's, we get back over $30 per ton, then that's why it's so important to push recycling, because we're making, not making money, but we get ahead in the game when we push getting into recycling.
Absolutely. It's working.
I lost it.
Any other questions from the recycling side? If not, we'll flip to sanitation, which is the next budget in your book on page 207.
You notice James decided to say all those nice things about Bob before we got to the refuse removal because the tone's changing here, folks.
Not tremendously. As I mentioned, it's, Solid Waste Management Board is changing their numbers. On the sanitation division, again, same with recycling, strengthen neighborhoods, improve quality of life by providing regular collection of refuse from our residential property owners. Again, I stress residential because our program only collects both sanitation and recycling from residential units, properties of four units or less. There are several four-unit buildings that are not in our program that are going with commercial properties, but four units and less is the cutoff for our recycling and sanitation program. Anything over that has to use commercial, and commercial industrial properties have to use commercial carriers as well. Sanitation division is also responsible for the maintenance and management of properties that were formerly utilized as municipal landfills. Here in the city, some of those sites include the Timmerman Quarry Site, the Quarry Park Site, the Knapp Street Quarry Site, and the former Keenest and Paulus Quarry Site. Those of you that have been on council for a few years, remember a couple of years ago, we were talking about the Keenest-Paulus landfill mitigation system coming online. Our consultants are continuing to keep that system fine-tuned. We're also continuing to work with the DNR on reviewing our management programs and reducing some of the monitoring wherever possible with the approval of the DNR on those old systems. As we mentioned before, sanitation and recycling both continue to be among some of the highest rated divisions in the citizen survey. As far as key accomplishments this year, a slight decrease in material collected through the first eight months as compared to 2021, but again, 2022 and 2021 were almost record years for collection on both the sanitation and the recycling side. So we're down a little bit as I think people are starting to get out a little bit more and are maybe throwing a little bit less away at home and are utilizing our commercial businesses a little bit more. So, you know, we saw a huge uptick in garbage collection during the first six, eight months of the pandemic because nobody could go out to eat, they were all getting takeout or delivery, and all that garbage was getting collected by us then instead of being managed by the commercial carriers. As I mentioned, we do continue to work with our environmental consultants to review the, those landfill management plans. This year, we had to replace a couple of monitoring wells at the Timmerman Sites, and we are planning for some infrastructure replacements at the Quarry Park Site over the next few years. Some of the vaults are starting to deteriorate, so we're going to be doing some work out on those as well. The budgetary impacts, you know, I mentioned that as we were talking about sanitation or recycling, but the Solid Waste Management Board is increasing the garbage tipping fee at $4 per ton, going from $45 to $49 per ton for material handled through the Winnebago County Transfer Station. Last year, we saw $2 an increased ton. So in the last two years, that's $6 a ton increase, or 14% increase in the handling cost from Winnebago County to manage the transfer station and then haul that material up to the Outagami County landfill. Increases in landfill tipping fees, fuel costs, and costs for managing the landfill gas mitigation systems really account for the majority of what is proposed to be an increase in costs on this year's budget. 21 was the first full year of operation for the Keenest-Paulus Site. We've, our consultants have that, that system tuned in pretty well, so we're doing a good job there of managing that landfill gas and getting it vented. Four garbage collection trucks were ordered in early 2021. Those were finally delivered early this year, so we're about a year lag on those. We've been working through some challenges with the vehicles, but we, we have them in service now and operating. So as you drive around the city, you know, four of the garbage collection trucks were, you know, new this year from McNeelis. There is one collection truck that is in this year's budget. We've been trying to work through some of the hiccups that we had with the other four before working with McNeelis to get that last truck ordered. So, and then I know Travis has been busy working on specs for all of the other equipment that was in the CIP, so we're continuing to work through that process to get that next truck on order. And as I mentioned with the recycling side, we do have the one operator that is shared half and half between sanitation and recycling who is retiring, I think right after the first of the year, right, Bob?
Yes.
So, and with that, are there any questions for the sanitation budget?
How have you kept your overtime pay so consistent?
Overtime with sanitation is really governed, sanitation and recycling both, is governed by the number of holidays that we have that they have to work on Saturdays for.
Okay.
So because sanitation, you know, we have a five-route structure, so we have, or a five-day structure, or this is how our routes are designed, so we have to collect five days a week, otherwise somebody's not going to get collected. So when there's a holiday during the week, say Thanksgiving, for example, is coming up, the drivers will not work Thanksgiving Day, they'll get their holiday pay, and then they work Friday and Saturday. So it's very consistent on the overtime because of the holidays. One of the things that we are investigating, maybe trying to do, is change the sanitation and recycling route structure to try and go to a 4-10 structure so that we can reduce those Saturdays. Because if there's a holiday in the middle of the week, you know, we'll be collecting on a Friday instead of Saturday. The big challenge is there is the transfer station is only open until noon on Saturdays, so we do that last dump, you know, a little before noon, empty the trucks, and then we finish our collection. So our trucks sit in the garage half to three-quarters full over the rest of the weekend. So we have been looking into that. We did not get it to a point where we could implement before we had to get the brochures ready to go. So it's not something that's going to be implemented in 2023, but it is an analysis that we are looking at for potential implementation of, in 2024, to try to improve that service and get rid of that Saturday collection day.
You mentioned the $4 per ton increase, and obviously last year's $2. Anything that we can proactively be trying to do to reduce the amount of material we're putting into the landfill that, you know, trying to hedge our bets or mitigate that that cost increase? And I guess what I'm asking is, is there any, anything we can do in terms of trying to promote even more recycling? I mean, there's still a significant amount of material that's going through the sanitation stream that still could go recycling that, with the different materials and things like that, is there anything we can be proactive?
Well, right now, we're working hand-in-hand with Winnebago County, doing public presentations and that, and we're actually, their literature and our literature, we're going to try to co-mingle it and expand on that. They're doing a lot. We are going to put in the brochure this year, the first time ever, a stamp that'll be on the top of the brochure. If you don't know what the item is, garbage or recycling, it'll read it for you with your smartphone.
Oh.
And that's, we're really trying to expand. I've also really had the drivers, they are becoming more and more aware, like if a garbage driver and it's their week to have the recycling cart out, they keep an eye on those residential properties. And if those residential properties don't ever have a recycling cart out, then we start to investigate into what's in their garbage. There is a lot of stuff that's being thrown away that shouldn't be thrown away, and it's a constant process to do it. But we are working hand-in-hand with even the DNR on programs to promote recycling more and more.
Awesome, good, thank you.
And I think one of the other things that Bob and Tim Winchester, the lead operator, do a great job of is getting into the schools and doing educational programs in the schools and continuing, you know, that education there. You know, I look back to when, you know, recycling first started to become a big thing, you know, that was the big push, was get it done in the school. So then, as children, we brought that home and said to our parents, well, no, that doesn't go in the garbage, that goes in recycling. So it's really a great program, and I know both Bob and Tim really enjoy getting into the schools and having those events with the, the school, the school kids here in Oshkosh. So that continues to be a big part of the program as well, to, to keep that education Anything else? All right, thank you, Bob. I know you needed to get going, so I think we're in good time for you there.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Bob.
Next, let's go to street division, which is on page 153 of your books. And we're going to kind of have to flip a little bit with this one because street division is one of the ones that is implementing an internal service fund. So the field operation internal service fund is on page 415. So I'll try and keep it in one and then the other, but if you do want to try to flip back and forth, it's page 415 and page 153. So street division, as I mentioned, the creation of the field operations internal service fund is really changing the budgeting practice of the general fund, street division. All of the operators, including the operators that were previously budgeted in stormwater utility and wastewater utility, have been moved into that internal service fund. So we'll talk a little bit more about that when we get into that. I do also want to mention, Justin Greshel sends his regards. Unfortunately, Justin was actually really looking forward to being here this morning and going through his first budget process, but unfortunately, both he and his wife came ill yesterday, so he is unfortunately not able to make it today. So, and he said he was really looking forward to it. I know he missed some of our initial meetings with the city manager and the finance director as well, dealing with some family issues. So he's missing out on those that he was really looking forward to, but we'll get them, we'll get them on the next cycle. Street division services fit into the improve and maintain our infrastructure section of the city strategic plan. Those services include maintaining our streets. A lot of the other services that we talked about previously, you'll see as we talk about the internal service fund. As I mentioned, with that change, this budget is going to look a lot different than it did in prior years. Personnel, supplies, and repair parts that used to show up in this division are going to show up in the inter-fund chargebacks line item of this budget as they're going to be budgeted for in that internal service fund. Some of the key accomplishments on the street division side is the asphalt overlay program. I've got Andy here, that's one of his, one of his pet projects, I guess is the best way to describe it. Andy's got a good asphalt background, so he really takes the lead on that program. Streets completed this year, Northwest Haven Drive from State Trunk Highway 21 to Ammer Road, so the old Emmer's Lane, as everybody may be aware, especially following the completion of the Ammer Road project for the town of Algoma, the condition of that road really became evident. So wasn't quite ready to do a full reconstruct, so we got out and did an asphalt overlay on that street. There was an alley on the west side of Main Street between 9th and 10th, 4th Avenue between Sawyer Street and Gunther Street, and then here on Avenue between Main Street and Mount Vernon Street. So that was our asphalt overlay program managed by street division this year. Through the CIP, we also do some things that are managed by the engineering division. Some of the budgetary impacts, and we mentioned the staff, most of the staff, with the exception of the management and administrative staff, have been moved to the internal service fund. Sodium chloride budget, very weather dependent, and all depends if we have a couple of major events, or if we get small snow events every other day, is really going to depend on what kind of road salt usage we have. Current budget assumptions account for the cost of our guaranteed purchase and our reserve fill for 2022, 2023, plus an early fill for next year that we're estimating. So we have the contract executed with DOT for this coming winter, and then we're estimating that we'll likely need an early fill in the fall to fill the dome before the winter season starts. That asphalt overlay program that we talked about, you know, we've really transitioned that from a cold mix program to a hot mix asphalt program, just due to, one, cost, hot mix asphalt is less expensive than cold mix, and two, it lasts longer. So it costs less and it gives us a longer life, so it's made sense to make that transition. We started transitioning that about five years ago, Andy?
A little over five years ago, and to James' point, it was a cold mix overlay program. At that time, we were looking to get some of our roads that were in poor, to get them through to about five years, and then they can get to watch you that, you know, that it's yet to be, you know, long-term. With this program and transitioning to hot mix, we now call it the hot mix overlay program, and we're able to get almost 10 years out of a lot of these roads now. We've received a lot of positive feedback from the community. It's a better product, as James also said, it's cheaper than the cold mix ones, there's less moving parts and how we can have to go and get the material. And we've been able to do many, many different things over the last, you know, five, six years that are a benefit to the community. So we've seen a lot of positives with this program.
All right. One thing too, if you want to flip to the ARPA allocation spreadsheet, I know I heard Russ mention it a little bit yesterday, the asphalt preservation program. I did not bring my little reference sheet with me, but one of the things with asphalt pavement is there are a lot of early maintenance activities that can be done to really extend the life of an asphalt pavement before you have to get into an overlay. Historically, we have not been doing a lot of those activities. We do not have the equipment or the expertise in-house to do those. So as I was attending some of our public works conferences early this year, I really started looking into it a little bit more, and I approached the city manager and the finance director to see if we could use some ARPA allocations to put together an asphalt preservation program to get us through the next couple of seasons using those ARPA allocations. I believe the asphalt preservation program is about the last line in the 2023, and then it shows up again in the 2024. So that, we are working with some, one of our consultants is helping us put some specifications together. Andy and some of the staff at field operations are going to help us pick out some good candidates for some preservation projects, whether that be a sealant, maybe a chip seal, or, you know, some more aggressive crack filling and then sealing. We're looking at a myriad of potential strategies to really extend the life of some of those asphalt streets. Andy mentioned we're getting, you know, more life out by using hot mix instead of cold mix. We can really extend the life of some of these streets by going through some of those actual maintenance activities that we just haven't had the budget to be able to do for many years. So we're looking, right now, we've got 50 to 55 miles of asphalt streets in the city, and we're hoping with this program, over the course of the next two years, that we can apply treatments to 10 to 12 miles of those streets in two years. So we can hit probably 20% of those streets with this two-year allocation and, and put some good life extension on those streets. So with that, are there any question?
James, if you could, you or Russ could explain just a little bit about how you've redone this, because we give a very general explanation.
Sure. You want me to do that now or as we flip to the internal service fund?
Well, maybe, maybe I can just do just a little oversight, and then you can talk about it a little bit more in the, in the internal service fund. So if you're looking at page 154, I just want to make sure everybody's following along with what James said. On page 154 is the personnel cost for the streets division. And if you look in 2022, we had 27 people budgeted to this department. In 2023, we're down to two. It's not that we've lost 25 people, we've taken their cost and moved them into this internal service fund to account for it. Number one, it takes it out of the general fund, and these are people that'll be helping do not only the repair of vehicles, but also other things that'll get charged out through that internal service fund. So the internal service fund, again, is a separate accounting activity, and then when they do work in a certain area, like if they're doing work in a street, in the streets, it'll come back under, we call it object code 6433, which is the inter-fund chargebacks. So you notice in the past, we've never had anything in there, but for 2023, we're projecting that to be $2 million for the streets division. Again, that's part of the process that we're going through in trying to reconcile this accounting and some of the little bumps in the road that we've had along the way in getting that implemented. So we've made our best estimate in working between finance and public works on how to illustrate that, so it's going to kind of make it a little awkward when comparing numbers. Well, in addition to doing street work, I mean, they do all the street work, but their largest customer is this, is a utility.
Both utilities, yeah. Previously, there were five equipment operators budgeted directly in the stormwater utility, and there were three equipment operators budgeted directly in the wastewater utility. You know, so all of the equipment operators that were previously in street division, as well as those equipment operators that were previously in the two utilities, are all moved into the field operations internal service fund. As we were going through and doing an evaluation of the cost to try to calculate the internal fund, inter-fund chargebacks, it really came to a realization that, you know, stormwater utility and wastewater utility were, as Mark said, the biggest customers of street division. So as street division was going out and maintaining, you know, for example, if they got a leaky storm sewer, council, you heard about it when we were talking about the CIP, the residents on Coolidge said, yeah, we know the street division guys real well, they come out every couple of years and fix the storm sewer. Well, that's a stormwater utility cost that was getting charged back to the stormwater utility through the general fund. With the implementation of the asset management software, it became nigh impossible to manage the chargebacks without bringing all those equipment operators home into a single place. And the best way to do that was in the internal service fund. We also discovered while doing that research, that stormwater utility previously was paying for those five equipment operators, but were receiving the benefit of approximately six and a half to seven FTEs of equipment operator. So in effect, the general fund was subsidizing the stormwater utility a little bit, two FTEs, because that wasn't getting charged back. By moving all of those staff into the internal service fund, and with the work orders on the asset management system, now managing those chargebacks, the appropriate utility or, you know, appropriate accounts will see those chargebacks. So it ended up with a, a bit of a net reduction in the overall cost being absorbed by the general fund, street division.
And that'll be even more helpful. We don't have an expenditure restraint problem this year, as Russ indicated, but when that, when that changes, not if, when that goes back to itself, these overcharges will not be reflected in the general fund. You know, James will be able to recapture them and say, okay, stormwater utility owes us this, so it won't overstate our expenditures in the general fund, which can cause an expenditure.
us this," so it won't overstate our expenditures in the General Fund, which can cause an expenditure restraint problem. So there's, there's some financial benefits as well as just operational. The transition makes it really awkward, and I asked the question only because I could see council members flipping between different pages, like, they're not getting it. So I want, I want them to understand that there's a strategic financial reason, as well as just an operational reason for James to do that. We're recapturing two, costs of two employees that we were, we were eating in the General Fund when they should have been stormwater utility.
Right.
So this revenue source, then, the service charge, that's essentially different departments, different utilities, paying for services they're using for the employees funded through this?
You're looking at the Street Division?
Yeah.
Essential Streets, 415, 417.
Okay, you're looking at the Internal Service.
How are they getting paid?
So you're flipping to the, do you want me to flip to the Internal Service Fund?
I think you have to, because they were.
Okay.
I could see the page flipping, I was like, they're, they're getting close, but I wanted to make sure they get it completely.
And that's, that's why I said we might have to do a little bit of back and forth with these. So I'm going to flip my notes as well, so I can talk about this. So we talked a lot about, you know, the why, so yeah, if you look at that internal, or that service charge street, that line item 4812, is that the one you were looking at, Mike? So yeah, what that is, is that revenue stream is coming from everywhere else that those employees are being charged out to. So if you flip back to the Street Division, you know, that two million dollars in that 6433, that's a combination of payments going to the Streets Internal Service Fund and the Central Garage Internal Service Fund for taking care of the street vehicles. So that's, so in this case, you know, those three wastewater equipment operators, the five that the stormwater was paying, but was actually getting the benefit of seven, plus all of the work that was previously getting charged out for maintaining those utility systems, all those are getting charged back through the 6433s across numerous accounts. So it's, it's not only Street Division, it's stormwater utility, it's wastewater utility, it's water utility, because Street Division does asphalt patches for the water utility when they have water main breaks on asphalt streets. It's, you know, all of those things.
Sorry, is, so is the chargeback related directly to the specific work they're doing, then?
Yes.
So it's just, so it's more precise?
Yes.
Yes.
And if you're on page 415, 416, 417, we, Finance made an error in the title of this, and I've talked to James, we're going to call this Internal Service Fund Field Ops, not just Streets.
Yeah.
Because it's more than just Streets, and then the other one will be Internal Service Fund for the Central Garage.
Fleet Management, we'll call it.
Fleet Management, yeah.
Yeah, we went with Field Operations, because this isn't just Streets. They're, you know, this division maintains all the stormwater detention basins, they do all the lawn mowing around the surface, we have a consultant that deals with the native vegetation, because that's their expertise, and that's not our staff's expertise. But they're also cleaning, televising, jetting our storm sewers, our sanitary sewers. If we've got a manhole that's, you know, maybe the rings are shot, and so the casting is sunk, and you drive down the street and you go tootum tootum as you drive over a manhole cover, well, that's these guys that are going to go out and dig that and fix that. But that's a cost that is really the utility's cost, it's not the Street or the General Fund, because that asset is owned by the utility. So yes, it's a more precise way of accounting for who's receiving the benefit and then who's paying for it. Because before, it was kind of a, it was an estimate of, well, there's this many FTEs worth of usage, so we're going to budget that many people in, in that utility. You know, thankfully, the office assistant over there keeps meticulous records of how all of our staff were working. So I was able to go through, as I was working with Justin and these guys working on the budgets, I had a ten-year history that I was able to look at and say, "Okay, yeah, I can see how we've shifted," and average that out, and that's where, you know, it was six and a half to seven FTEs of benefit for the stormwater utility, plus what they were already getting charged back on the maintenance of the infrastructure system. So in addition to, you know, the maintenance of that, it's, they go out every fall and spring, once leaf collection is done, and clean all the inlets out with the VAC trucks. So they clean all the leaves and everything that have actually fallen into the inlets. We have numerous inlets that have sumps in them to capture coarse debris, they're cleaning all of that stuff out through the fall, winter, and spring when they can. Again, that's all stormwater utility costs related to our water quality management from our stormwater permit through the DNR, so, you know, those are all costs that the stormwater utility should be bearing and wasn't bearing quite enough of.
Just to expand on that, Mark does a very good job of getting and keeping track.
Mark Soper, that is.
Mark Soper, excuse me, does a very good job of keeping those records and has for a very long time. One of the other things with this program that our crew leaders out in the field are able to do now is they actually carry tablets with them. So as the work is being performed and done, they're actually able to put that information in there right away. So we're actually, as good as the information was that we were getting, I feel like we're even getting better information, even, you know, up to date. The operators that are in charge of doing this have done a very good job. This was implemented this year, they took to it very, very well, they're using it, and it makes us not only keep better record-keeping, but more efficient out in the field also. So it's a real win-win situation.
As council may remember, we were having this discussion last year, we had a line item in the budget where we were acquiring six or seven cellular-enabled tablets for use with the work order system and the asset management. That's what Andy's talking about. Those lead workers have those tablets out in the field with them, and they can keep up to date on everything that's going on through that system. So if you, if you look at the, as Russ mentioned, the Personnel page on 416, you can see there's thirty-three proposed employees in the Field Operations Internal Service Fund, whereas we only reduced by twenty-five in the Street Division. Those other eight are the eight that were previously budgeted in the two utilities. And then the, the cost for supplies and repair parts, you know, so sewer pipe that they have to buy to replace, you know, that shows up in this budget and then gets realized in the utility budgets through that interfund chargeback. Does that help clear that up?
Yeah.
Are there any other questions on either of those two as we talk through these?
I'm not sure where it would be, James, but maybe it's on the next one, Central Garage Fund, but is there potential training dollars looking at caring for electric vehicle?
That would certainly show up in Fleet Management and Central Garage. We've been doing, and as, we'll bring Travis up here in just a second, we've been doing significant training with those staff on emergency vehicle technician training right now, since taking over the management of the Fire Department. So that's been the focus right now, and getting more of those staff trained to be proficient on that equipment, but that is where that'll show up, is as we get into Fleet Management and Central Garage.
Thank you.
Any other questions on either Street or Field Operations Internal Service Fund? All right. Thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
With that, we'll switch over to the Central Garage, and likewise Streets, we've got Central Garage and the Fleet Management Internal Service Fund. So Central Garage is on page 157. And the Fleet Management Internal Service Fund is on page 419, so I'm going to stick my pen in there so I can flip back to it in a little bit. We mentioned the overall change in practice with the Internal Service Fund, so I don't think I need to get into that anymore. Central Garage's services really fit into the improve and maintain our infrastructure, primarily focusing on our fleet infrastructure and equipment. This, Travis in particular, with this division, assists with the writing of specifications for vehicle purchases for all parts of the city, maybe with the exception of Police and Fire, or do you get involved in those two, Travis?
I get involved with the Fire Department, but not so much with the Police.
Okay. So Travis works with purchasing on specification writing for all the vehicle purchases that are approved in the CIP. So Travis is very busy with that aspect of it, as well as trying to manage a lot of other things. So some of the significant accomplishments, you know, we've made a lot of progress on the implementation of the Asset Management Module, EAM. Still got a lot of work to do. We've had some, I think, good conversations with the software team here in the last week. Jennifer, I think you were a part of a lot of those. I think we're finally making some forward progress on some of the roadblocks that we were having throughout the implementation.
Early but surely, but we're getting there. We've got a few more things to wrap off, but...
We've got a few more things, but I think we've, we've got, we've got their attention now, whereas I don't think we did earlier in the year, and they're actually helping us make some progress now, and we made a lot of progress here in the last couple of weeks.
I think, just for council's benefit and even the city managers, I think James and I really had some long, hard discussions, because we tried to go into this process, and we got to the point where we thought, you know, are we just pounding our head against the wall and not getting that support from the technology side of things, to the point where we were thinking about scrapping it, if we couldn't get things corrected? I think we now feel a little bit more confident that we'll get this implemented in a, in a efficient manner. We're just doing so many different special things to try to make it work, but we've got the attention of Tyler, that we needed some more support in just getting everything all set up correctly, and so the, the process was kind of difficult, and it was very stressful on both my staff and James' staff as we were trying to make this happen. And it got to the point where we were thinking about scrapping it, but we were able to get things worked out. I think that's a fair statement.
Yeah, it is. We sat right around these tables one day, and we looked at each other, and we said, "Is this salvageable, or do we cut our losses and move on?" And we had IT Manager Newman in here with us as well, and we had a good, serious conversation about it, and I think Tony was finally able to get the right attention at Tyler to get people assigned to our issues and get us moving forward. But Russ is right, we had that conversation around this very table, and we were like, "Well, let's give them one more try, and if they can't do it, we're going to have to move on." And, and they finally stepped up and started getting us what we needed. So as, as we mentioned, and, you know, most of the staff from this division have been shifted over to the Fleet Management Internal Service Fund. As you look at page 158, the Personnel page, one lone survivor, and that's Travis.
He's the only one.
Kind of the overall management of things, and, and that's why we've left it the way it is right now, because Travis does so many other things right now. What we'll see as we continue through this implementation process, if that's, if that's how it's going to hold, or if we're going to fully transition even Travis over there. So if we want to flip to the Internal Service Fund portion of Fleet Management on page 419, you know, as we mentioned, all of the other staffing have been moved over into, into this Internal Service Fund. Again, you know, maintaining our infrastructure, I would go so far as to say, once we get EAM working correctly, enhancing the effectiveness of government, because it will make us more effective and more efficient. We just got to get it working that way first. All of the fuel that was previously budgeted and managed for in Central Garage is now being managed in this Internal Service Fund. Our fuel system is being used to allocate those costs appropriately back to appropriate expense accounts, as we've done in the past. So averaging about one hundred and fifteen thousand gallons of unleaded gasoline, about one hundred and forty-five thousand gallons of diesel fuel, and about thirty-nine thousand gallons of compressed natural gas. There's going to be some shifting in the diesel and compressed natural gas as we have gotten the new sanitation fleet online. As we mentioned, Mayor, we continue to train all of our division staff on the Pierce fire apparatus and obtaining that emergency vehicle technician certifications to continue to build on our ability to maintain that fleet. As we get those, those staff up to date, then we can start looking at other training needs that, that we need to be preparing for the future. Costs for the Fleet Management Services are getting, are allocated or charged back to expense accounts based on, you know, what equipment is being worked on. So if Fleet Management is fixing a tandem axle dump truck for Street Division, that chargeback is going to go to the General Fund Street Division. They're fixing a street sweeper for stormwater utility, it's getting charged back to the stormwater utility. So again, using that asset management system to allocate those costs. We've talked a lot in the past about, you know, the challenges with the fuel, you know, certainly our overall costs can fluctuate widely, depending on a whole lot of factors that we have absolutely no control over. You know, whether there's a weather situation in the Gulf, or, you know, this year, we've seen it, you know, with the, you know, the war in Europe, you know, fuel prices have gone crazy. You know, it fluctuates dramatically and is nothing that we have any control over, but we try to budget accordingly and manage it accordingly.
Yeah, just as an example, as most recently, the oil refinery in Ohio had been down for some significant repairs, which I kept a close eye on the cost of unleaded fuel. We all noticed that it had spiked up around our area recently, so I delayed ordering the load of unleaded fuel that we needed as long as I could, waiting for the price to drop, which it did, probably about twenty cents a gallon. So we do as much as we can to actively manage when we go out for bid on fuel, related to what the pricing is at.
And I think with that, in this fund, there are a couple of enhancements, requests, that I think I'm going to turn over to Travis to talk about those, so he can talk about, one, the benefit that he's seen from having a light duty person with him for the past year, and kind of what that storm, our need for. So Travis, I'll let you kind of take it over from there.
Yep, as, as I've been working in the Central Garage the last few years, we haven't had a lot of administrative help. So myself and my garage coordinator, Keith, have been doing a lot of that work ourselves, just to manage it. You know, our primary goal has always been to make sure that the equipment is out on the street, so we can plow the snow, put the fires out, service the water utilities. So a lot of that administrative work, we just have been getting done kind of when we've had a chance, or when we've received enough follow-up from accounting that they needed us to address things in a certain timeline. We were fortunate enough, it's unfortunate for her situation, but one of the transit operators ended up on light duty, has been on light duty for a significant amount of time. So I trained her as she came over to work on light duty to do a lot of the administrative role related to the purchasing that we do, and then we have also added a part-time admin to help with a lot of those things that Keith and I were doing, that were taking our time away from being able to handle some of the higher-level things, ordering the vehicles in the Street CIP, training some of the younger and less experienced mechanical, mechanics on the, excuse me, municipal equipment. So we've just seen a lot of good benefit from having the people helping out with those things on the back end to make the division run. We do an incredible amount of purchasing related to a lot of other divisions, sometimes up close to two hundred transactions per month, and it was just taking a lot of my time, and a lot of Keith's time away from being able to make sure that we're maintaining the fleet properly, so that's why we have this enhancement in the budget this year.
Yeah, with the transition, with the Internal Service Fund, and with the asset management system, you know, we're really taking a much more active role in managing our stockroom and our inventory, you know, to make sure that we have what we need to fix the vehicles when we need to fix the vehicles. You know, if we, the more active we can be in managing that, the less reliant we might become on, you know, having to quick run out and, "Oh, we don't have this," you know, and maybe end up paying more because I can go down the street and get it versus ordering it from our usual vendor that might take a week or so to get it. So, you know, we really need to be able to be a lot more active in managing those things through the system, and that's the enhancement for the inventory management, and then, you know, upgrading our part-time office assistant. And then, you know, upgrading our part-time office assistant to a full-time office assistant as well.
Question.
Yes.
So on that enhancement request for the office assistant, this is only showing 16,000 for wage and benefit.
That's the upgrade.
Oh, okay.
It's a 60% position right now.
Okay.
Question on, and this may be more of an accounting question, but moving to an Internal Service Fund, being able to, we use the word properly, allocate to the utilities and the, the actual true costs that were, that were going to bill to those utilities, right? Because they're, they're the biggest, the biggest users. The management, you had, you still had one manager left in, in the old Central Garage, considering possibly moving them into the, the Internal Service Fund as well. I heard you mention, but is this going to be fully hit to the levy? Or is there abilities to properly charge off even for management within the office to that Internal Service Fund? To make sure that, because the full Central Garage is there to support, as you mentioned, the full operations.
Right.
And the full operations should then be charged off to chart, you know, charge back to the appropriate utilities for the full cost of operations? If, if I'm making this clear enough.
Yeah, you are. And, and I think James tried to explain that and let me just try a different way of explaining it. We're, we're trying to take steps into getting to that full, um, accounting for the overhead. So like Travis's cost is not included in that yet, but eventually we want to get to it. So right now we are doing what we call more of the direct cost and people costs. So like Travis is still sitting in the general fund until we get all of the bugs worked out and we get the overhead and everything else.
Anticipated that that's the shift where.
Yes.
For, for even like these two, you know, the requests here that eventually that's what we're going to be for.
Again, we wanted to show it as impacting the general fund because, because the portion, a portion of that then comes back into the general fund for their cost. So while it may be accounted for these positions in the Internal Service Fund, the indirect charges in the, in that chargeback, the 6433 count is going to impact the, the levy. And so that's why we wanted to show the enhancements as impacting the levy at this point.
Because there's a partial impact.
Yes.
We just don't know what the full is yet.
No, yeah, I don't, um, I don't have a breakdown and I haven't asked Travis to try to determine how much of his staff time is related to utilities versus general fund activities. That's a question I haven't asked him, so I'm not even going to put him on the spot to try to.
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't expect it either, but just making sure, getting confirmation that that's where we're headed with full operations.
Right.
Yeah, thanks.
Any other questions on either of those two funds? All right, thank you Travis.
Thank you.
Uh, I think next we'll jump to Engineering Division on page 149 of your book. As Justin's coming up to join us. Engineering Division Services fit in, you know, improving our, and maintaining our infrastructure, supporting economic development, and improving quality of life in our strategic plan. These include the division's primary responsibility to manage construction projects. They're responsible for survey, design, inspection of our annual street reconstruction program, our annual asphalt program, sanitary sewer water and stormwater design, and coordination of our long-range planning documents for all three utilities. Engineering Division also assists other departments in planning and managing construction projects. Staff has assisted Parks Department with several projects, assists transportation annually with the parking lot reconstruction projects, and continue to support community development, assisting developers and helping manage city construction projects. Some key accomplishments for this year, design bid and are managing approximately $30 million worth of construction projects. Continuing the construction of the Oregon Street Interceptor. By the end of the year, we'll have completed the Algoma Boulevard reconstruction from Wisconsin to Congress, East Lincoln from Maine to the railroad tracks, and Rosalia from Washington to CP. And also designed and bid out the Pratt Trail reconstruction within Menominee Park, assisting parks with that one. Construction is planned for next year after some of the building projects are done in the park. We didn't want to interfere with those projects, but also in consultation with the Parks Department, really felt it was best to let that project get done and, and then pave the road rather than having their construction activity driving on a newly paved road. Some of the budgetary impacts, the state of Wisconsin requires the city to update the street pacer rating on a biannual basis. That means that cost is included in this 2023 budget because it's time to do it again. We're also replacing a survey grade GPS unit that is 14 years old. And realistically, once it starts failing, which we've had some issues with, parts are not available for it anymore. And probably catch heck for this down in the office, but we'll also be wishing a happy retirement to our longest tenured employee in the division. After 44 years of service, Principal Engineer Steve Ditmer has informed us that he will be retiring in 2023.
Well, actually Steve's retiring two days short of his 44. He can't handle it. He's leaving, they can't even handle 44 years.
Yeah, but he slept through the last 22 years.
No, Steve, Steve has been instrumental in training two of our young engineers right now who have taken over the management of our street reconstruction program. Both Josh and Jake have been managing those projects. This year Josh stepped in and took over the Ninth Avenue project from Steve last year. And Steve's knowledge of doing this for so long has been invaluable in the progression of those two young engineers. I, I can't say enough about how much Steve's experience has helped the division get, you know, those two young staff members on the ground running.
He's been a great mentor.
Yeah, he has been a tremendous mentor of those two engineers. So I'm sure we'll hear about it if he's listening in at all, but, uh, you know, come January, at least according to what Steve has told us so far. You know, until the day comes, it may change, but so far we've been told in January, he's going to be retiring. One of the other things too, uh, I know yesterday there was some discussion about an enhancement request for a GIS technician. I think Kelly talked about it and I'm, I'm not sure if Tony and IT talked about it as well. But I know Kelly did talk about, um, you know, due to retirements, you know, that one retirement was an Engineering Division technician who was a primary GIS person. We also had another primary GIS person in the, in the Engineering Division leave the organization. So two key GIS people that were really helping to pick up some of that load that now Jeff Now and Community Development has had to take on. You know, that's a big part of why that general funded GIS position is so important. Council may recall, you approved a utility GIS position in the 2023 budget. That utility, that utility GIS person has been monumental in advancing our utility-based GIS system. In fact, we were trading some correspondence with him earlier this week. You know, some of the things that he's working on to get our utility system updated and to, you know, more current practices, not, you know, 10-plus-year-old GIS practices, but also the integration with the asset management software and really helping us identify assets that are, for stormwater, for example, you know, the storm mains out in the street are stormwater utility responsibility, but inlets and catch basins in a parking lot that's owned by the city, those aren't stormwater utility responsibility, those are city responsibility. So we need to make sure that the GIS and the asset management system are all talking to each other and set up so that our team in the field, when they're clicking on those assets to do work, it's getting charged back appropriately. And that utility GIS position has made leaps and bounds this year for the utility side of the GIS. And that's why it is, is so important to have that kind of a, a service for the rest of the general fund as well. Because there are so many other departments that benefit from, you know, having GIS expertise that, you know, right now, whereas we used to have, you know, three or four, you know, we're down to just Jeff and Zach now. And it's, it is a lot for them. And that's why, you know, we, we don't have the support in our division that we used to have with the knowledge base. And that's why we feel it's important to support that position as well, because we know that from a general fund, it's, it's very important for us to be able to move forward. And with that, are there any questions on the engineering? I know, Mark, I don't, I, I wasn't really planning on getting too much into CIP because we used to take a whole two hours on our CIP just by ourselves. And we only have two hours today, so I don't know how much you want me to try and touch on anything.
I don't know if we necessarily need to get into great detail, but to the degree that anything has been added to ARPA and taken out of either borrowing or, um, uh, equipment, that might be appropriate to point out because that, you talked about it generally during, uh, Russ did during the presentation yesterday. But the street projects that were identified in the CIP are still.
Street water, yeah, those are all on course. I believe the only ARPA allocation we had was the asphalt preservation program, if I remember correctly, Russ.
Yeah, we also had, um, well, that's not your division, the, the signals, we had some concrete repairs.
What page are you on, Russ, everybody?
I'm on page 38, uh, the ARPA list.
Yeah, go ahead. I just wanted to make sure everybody was cracking.
So we did have some concrete repairs as well as the asphalt stuff.
Oh, that's right, the concrete repairs, that's our, uh, concrete pavement replacement. Noel Keller Street is in this year's ARPA allocation. Yeah, for, for next year, we've got the concrete program again, so that's in ARPA as well. So that's a, a similar to kind of what we're doing with Keller Street this year. Uh, that, that is funded with the ARPA dollars. As, as Mark indicated in the initial budget message, we did submit that for bipartisan infrastructure law funding. Keller Street did not receive funding, so we funded it with ARPA. However, Washburn Street from Dickinson to 20th and Osborne Avenue from NAP to about the driveway into the National Guard Armory, those were both funded with federal fiscal year 22 bipartisan infrastructure law dollars. Those bids will be opened by the DOT on November 8th. I've heard from some of the contractors that not only did they say they've never seen a DOT bid opening in October, they've also said they've never seen one so big in November. And there's one reason and one reason only for that is the federal fiscal year 22 bipartisan infrastructure law projects. State of Wisconsin Department of Transportation has, I guess the best way to describe it is in agreement with federal highway that federal dollars, because the federal fiscal year ends the end of September. Federal highway allows Wisconsin DOT to open bids in November for prior federal fiscal year money. So those projects that are opening in November can utilize federal fiscal year $22. So all of the FFY 22 bill projects, DOT is opening them all across the state in November.
And, and council will recall that you approved us getting some design work done for several streets. A lot of communities didn't do that, and because of that, we took advantage of that, that allocation, that even though they're opening the bids later, we got, we got back in there before most other communities.
Our metropolitan planning organization was given an allotment. The City of Oshkosh was the only one in our MPO that had plans ready to go to receive federal fiscal year $22. So by starting that design work when we did, we were able to get those two projects done with federal fiscal year $22 money.
Aside from thanking you for that, um, I may want to ask you to thank us again. I think we need to get some more of these projects on the shelf so that we can take advantage of the, the, if bill funding comes up or if they're short, or the, the state, uh, short on projects, a project decides they don't want to proceed or something like that, I want to be in line. And we already have two extras in line. We have one of the, one section of Washburn was not approved, so we've still got that on the shelf and that's a good thing. What's the other one? Oh, the other one was.
The other one was Keller, which we're doing with ARPA money.
Because we knew that needed to get done. And if you're inconvenienced on Keller, you're welcome. You'll thank me, you'll thank me, uh, you know, come.
Just make sure you follow the signs.
When it's done, they will, but right now it is vicious. It is bad out there.
I guess I've got, uh, two questions. Number one, going back to Mark's comment about putting, getting these projects out there. We are famous for, for planning and spending money on architecture, engineering and things like that, and then projects don't go anywhere. So I want to caution everybody that if we're going to do this, if we're going to spend the engineering dollars, that it's something that's got a good shot of moving forward quickly. Number two, do we see anything, any projects possibly changing because of supply chain issues? And, and therefore screwing up our budget?
We've seen a few things get delayed a little bit. The Oregon Street Interceptor project ideally would have started construction in April or May. It just started in August. The Bowlin Street Interceptor and Storm Sewer Project, that contractor knowing how long it was going to take to get the sewer pipe, they just put it in their schedule to start in spring of '23. You know, we are working on the last phase of the Oregon project. That's being done in conjunction with a, a DOT managed project. So we're working on the sewer design and working with their consultant to get that incorporated. Otherwise, we have not seen significant impacts. It's just certain pipes have, have been delayed, but we've not seen significant impacts. Some of the things that we have seen impacts on, uh, most recently, concrete and cement powder issues. You know, Street Division all summer had challenges getting loads of concrete to do street patch work to the point where, you know, they were doing street patches at 5:30 in the morning because that's when the concrete, the ready-mix supplier said, I can give you a few trucks at this time. You know, so it was a bit of a challenge between being a concrete and cement issue and being a truck driver issue. You know, the ready-mix plant in some cases had material, but they didn't have anybody to drive the trucks. That's why Street Division was taking deliveries at 5:30 in the morning because nobody else wanted delivery at that time of the morning, so they had trucks available. So it's, it's a bit of a, a combination with, uh, concrete right now. Our big projects, we've not seen too many issues with that, but then again, Vinton supplies all their own trucks for doing all their paving. So, uh, but a lot of the smaller contractors are having some challenges trying to get concrete from the ready-mix suppliers. I know our, our sidewalk rehab contractor has been restricted at times from getting concrete to finish their project.
And one thing I'll add to that is, um, knowing beginning of last year, some of these supply chain issues that we were going to have with projects, we've worked really hard this last summer to work on the 23 projects. And we have several of them out for bid already, a couple that have already been bid and a few more to do. So we're trying to give enough lead time on, on the contractors to be able to submit their orders and have a 20, 20-week lead time window on materials because we're not looking to start until spring.
That's good thinking. And that was one thing, knowing how big the DOT advertisement was going to be in November, I challenged Justin to get as many of our street projects bid opening before that DOT one because I wanted contractors opening our projects before they were full on DOT work. So I challenged Justin and I commend the Engineering Division team because Wisconsin Street Reconstruction for next year, that bid has already been opened. You haven't seen it for award yet because you haven't approved the CIP budget. So on November 9th, when you have the budgets, after those budgets are approved, you will start seeing on that same agenda, several bid awards for 23 construction projects that Justin and the team have already gotten done and had bid openings for. Because I challenged them to get in front of that DOT bid letting in November.
So the, um, the answer, James, previous question, if you go to page 460 on your budget, it's a list of all the major projects that we have lined up that were part of your CIP discussion. Nothing's really changed on that. But if there's any questions on any of those other major projects, again, some of these, it's all what we classify as utility infrastructure. So it could be utilities, it could be streets, it could be a combination of things. And the funding is in different buckets, um, which is on page 462. But if you have any questions on any of the major projects that we have lined up for 2023, now would be a time to ask it because we would like to get, to get those appropriated.
Just giving everybody a second or two to look, so. And, and certainly if you have any questions following this, you know, please feel free to reach out and, um, we'll get, we'll get you answers.
I guess just, um, one quick question, and that is, um, so on page 460, um, under that infrastructure, under the Bauman Street and Coolidge Avenue, I believe we made some changes about whether or not there would be sidewalk ordered in. But I'm assuming that would be up under new sidewalk ordered in where that would reflect the reduction.
No, that would be in that Coolidge project, uh, my, and.
So is that already reflecting that reduction? So is that already reflecting that reduction?
No.
Okay.
It's the original amount.
Okay.
We haven't updated this with that, the removal of, of the concrete. Good call, uh, Mayor. But we'll get that updated before the final approval.
Any other questions? All right. Uh, then, uh, we'll move on to probably the quickest one, the Administration Division, uh, page one forty-five. Thank you, Justin. Um, Adminis- uh, Administration Division, uh, is really there to support all the other divisions. Um, you know, it's, it's myself, it's Assistant Director Steve Godey and our Administrative Assistant. And both myself and Steve Godey are split across, uh, um, utility budgets as well, so that's why as you look at page one forty-six, you only see portions of us. Uh, that's because the rest of us show up in utility budgets. So if there's no questions on Administration, we'll move on to the Public Works Special Fund, page two sixty-five.
I'm sorry, James, where are we going to?
Two sixty-five, the Public Works Special Fund.
Thank you.
Um, the, the next update to the budget book will include, uh, the Personnel Page, which was inadvertently missed, uh, when the book was put together. Uh, there's one staff member in this fund, and that is the Civil Engineering Technician Program Manager for Right-of-Way Permits that the Common Council approved in the twenty-twenty-two budget. Uh, when that was presented to the council last fall, we, uh, had planned on a three-way split between the three utilities. Uh, however, as we, uh, got to the implementation, we talked as over with, uh, with Finance and decided that it would probably be easiest to just manage it directly in this special fund that already existed. That way, all the revenue from the right-of-away permits went into one place. All the expenses for that individual were in one place, rather than having them go into one place and then journal entry them out to a bunch of places and a lot of back and forth. It just made it real simple from an administration to keep that position and all of its funding whole in this special fund. Uh, this special fund also serves, uh, to manage the private-side lead water service replacement program. Um, it's used to pay the contractors and then get the reimbursements from the, uh, DNR Safe Drinking Water Loan Principal Forgiveness Program. Um, as of writing my, uh, message about a week and a half ago, we had assisted up five hundred and eight, uh, property owners in total since the start of the program. I know that's gone up significantly since writing that. I think I've signed another ten or fifteen reimbursement requests. Um, we're currently reviewing the twenty-twenty-three funding opportunities, uh, to see if there's going to be any funding, uh, available to continue assisting property owners through the Safe Drinking Water Loan. Um, and also to date, uh, as of middle of last week, uh, we had processed three hundred and fifteen work and right-of-way permits, uh, through this fund. Uh, the, the lead service program, uh, the initial funding allotments that were set aside, twenty-twenty-two was, uh, the last year of that funding. However, with the bipartisan infrastructure law, there's a lot more funding, uh, being thrown around for water and in particular lead service replacements. Uh, we're not exactly sure how the state is going to manage that bill money and how they're going to allot it just yet. Uh, so we're continuing to monitor that, and we'll get all of the appropriate applications submitted so that at least our application is in. So once they figure out how they're going to manage the money, uh, we'll have an application in to continue proceeding. Um, other than that, we do need to get an evaluation done to figure out how we're going to continue that private-side lead service replacement program going forward if safe drinking water loan funding is not an option anymore. Uh, there are other options out there, including getting a, a program approved through the Public Service Commission. Um, that will change our program though because the Public Service Commission program does say thou shalt treat everybody the same, whereas right now we have a low to moderate income provision in our program where, um, if property owners meet, uh, certain conditions, they can either get seventy-five or a hundred percent of the, the lateral reem- reimbursed. So that, uh, portion of it would go away if we go through a PSC-approved program. So we're continuing to look at all options there to see how we can best serve our residents. Any other, any questions on that one? If not, um, I'll call Steve and Jason up then, and we'll start on the utilities.
It may be appropriate to introduce Jason.
That's, that, that's my first bullet point, Mark.
I, I see Jason in a tie. I'm just getting, I gotta get used to that, so.
Yeah. Well, hopefully, hopefully not too much. I like the casual look better.
So yes, uh, my first bullet point before we get started, um, I would like to, uh, you know, point out a new face at the table. Uh, Jason Ellis started his role as Utility Operations Manager just yesterday. So Jason will be officially introduced to you at next week's council meeting, uh, but seeing as we're having the workshops for the budgets today, I asked Jason to, uh, to come up and, uh, sit with us as well. So, um, I really thought it was important that you, you knew who you had in front of you and, uh, what the change was. Um, Steve Brand retired back in January, and, uh, Jason has stepped up and, uh, as I said, as of yesterday, is in that, uh, Operations Manager role for the utilities, and now we work on backfilling Jason's position.
Congrats.
Thank you.
Um, Water Utility Services really fall into, uh, supporting economic development, improving and maintaining our infrastructure and strengthening our neighborhoods, uh, through our primary mission to protect public health and safety by providing safe, uh, water that is, uh, safe to drink and an adequate supply for industry and, uh, fire demands. Um, I forgot to tell you what page we're on. We're on page three eighty-three. Sorry, I got so tied up in introducing Jason, I forgot the page number. Um, so some, uh, key accomplishments from the Water Utility this year, uh, completing the DNR sanitary survey of the City of Oshkosh Water Systems, uh, launching our residential connection control and water service material survey program. Both programs are requirement of the DNR. And, uh, Brad, where are you?
I'm right behind you.
Okay.
Every step of the way.
Hand out your, uh, hand out your materials.
Got it.
Um, and then launching our Get the Lead Out, uh, campaign, and I've got, Brad has brought some, uh, handout materials for you today that are a part of our Get the Lead Out campaign. Um, staff from the Water Utility have been at several community events, including a couple of, uh, farmers markets, uh, and I believe, uh, Brad, they've also been out at Saint Vinnie's as well, right?
Yes.
Um, any other, I know they've been a few other places, I think, right?
Yeah.
Uh, but these-
You already gave me this flag. I'm good.
These materials that I've asked Brad to bring and hand out to you are, uh, part of the materials that the Water Utility staff are handing out at these community events. Um, and this is, you know, part of our big program to, uh, you know, really encourage people to, uh, to work with us and help us try to get those lead services removed. Uh, some, some key budgetary impact issues. Um, costs related to water main breaks and service breaks on the public side are exceptionally weather-dependent. Um, as we saw in the winter of twenty, uh, twenty thirteen, fourteen, uh, an extremely cold winter can lead to a significant increase in costs re- related to repairing those leaks. So, you know, we are a little bit dependent on the weather there. Uh, influent water quality from Lake Winnebago has a significant impact on chemical usage as well as, uh, the sanitary sewer service fees for the Water Utility, because all the stuff we take out of the Lake Winnebago water to make it drinkable ends up going down the sanitary sewer to the wastewater plant to get taken out of that stream before it gets put back into the, the lake. So, um, has a significant impact there. Primary variances in the budgets are again related to those, uh, changes with the Internal Service Fund chargebacks, uh, the maintenance, uh, due to street divisions, uh, you know, Internal Service Fund and Field Ops charging back, uh, for those, uh, water service, uh, asphalt patches, and as well as maintenance and machinery and equipments. Um, the Furnell Avenue Water Tower is due for a mixing system installation and a painting. Uh, Public Service Commission considers that to be a maintenance activity, not a capital activity, even though life cycle is probably twenty-plus years. Uh, they still will not let us, uh, do that with capital funds. We have to do that with operating funds on the maintenance side. Uh, one update to the Personnel Page that was initially included in your book, uh, there was one Civil Engineering Technician, too, that was shown as a point six-six is actually a point three-three. That update will come out with future updates to your book, but I just wanted to call that out, that, um, as we were coordinating back and forth between our staff and, and Finance, uh, that was one item that we missed until the very end, after your books were prepared. So I wanted to point that out and let you know that that update will be there once, uh, the next iteration of the book is published. Uh, some additional, uh, regulatory, and we've talked about regulatory issues for several years with both water and wastewater, uh, but the things with, uh, the lead services, the corrosion control, the, um, residential cross-connection and the removal of lead services, um, a, a lot of regulatory challenges that, uh, we have. Um, so I'm going to let Steve, uh, talk more about those, uh, enhancement requests for the Water Utility. I think you've heard enough of my talking. Um, but one thing Steve is going to point out, uh, there was one enhancement request that I think was missed on your initial page. Is it on this new one, Jennifer?
No.
Okay.
Sorry.
Oh, that's okay. I just wanted to double check. Uh, so there's one additional one that Steve will be talking about that was not on your list. Again, just a miscommunication between our staff and Finance when those, uh, papers were getting, uh, put together. So Steve, take it away, please.
Thanks, James. Good morning, Council. Uh, thank you.
Excuse me one minute.
Sir.
Just a question about that. There have been several items that have been not on that enhancements list. Are we going to get that update, updated one before the end of today?
Uh, not by the end of today, but yes, you will receive it.
We could, we could try.
Okay.
Um, I'm not going to make any promises.
Okay. Sorry.
No, no problems whatsoever. Um, and if questions do pop up, please feel free to interrupt me as I'm going to go through what I have here. Um, so as James said, we do actually have, um, three positions for the Water Utility. We're seeking for enhancements versus the two that were in there. Uh, the three positions are a, um, a lead water maintenance worker, a water maintenance worker, and an additional water filtration plant operator. Uh, a lot of these are stemming from our ever-increasing regulatory requirements that we have to meet. Uh, as James mentioned, we completed the, the sanitary survey in twenty-twenty-two of the water filtration plant and all of the essential vertical assets for the distribution system. Um, two significant changes have come out of that essentially due to a change in DNR staffing. Our prior, um, inspector, if you want to call him that, had retired. Um, we have new staff and they are being much more diligent and interpretations of the codes have changed. So, um, we had to implement a cross-control connection program to include at least ten percent of every residential property every year. So that's about twenty-three-hundred inspections that we have to do annually now of residential homes that we were previously able, able to cover by sending out a brochure once a year with the water bill. So we've gone from a administrative task to actually having to get staff scheduled into homes to do an inspection of the cross-connection. What they're looking for for that is essentially anything that could pose a contamination risk to the city system if water was pulled back into the system from a break. Um, the biggest thing that most homes are missing are a vacuum breaker on the hose bibs or on a laundry room sink. The utility provides those to the, to the homeowner. They can be simply screwed onto the faucet, brings the majority of the homes into compliance by the time we leave and we're good to go. A few of the other issues that could be out there is if a boiler in a home was missing a, um, a backflow prevention valve, or, um, if someone has a, a hose directly connected to something that can, can sit down inside of a sink or something like that, that would do that.
So, I mean, these are physical inspections. These, there is no way around this.
There is no way around this.
So it's a truck roll for every inspection?
Yes. We have to physically-
About two hundred a month.
Uh, yes, roughly twenty-three-hundred a year.
Right, yes.
So of the residential, plus the commercial program, which we already had going, which we hire HydroCorp to do. Council members have probably seen that agreement come through. So that's in addition to our commercial inspections that were being farmed out, uh, to HydroCorp and done. So that's been a, a lovely, uh, additional task that the Water Utilities or Water Distribution staff have done a wonderful job on. We are going to make our mark for this year, assuming we can stay on pace and, uh, continue to do that. Um, the biggest challenge we have actually had is getting people to allow us access to those homes. Uh, we're hopeful that once-
I think Councilmember Erickson, I think you had come to Mark and I with a question about that, probably about three months ago or so, that you had gotten from a resident, and, and that, that is precisely what this is. Sorry, Steve, I just wanted to tie that to Lindsay's question that came up earlier this year.
Well, and I want to kind of piggyback on Lindsay's thing. I mean, are we making it clear that this isn't an inspection of your house? This is strictly taking a look at this?
Right.
Yeah, because, because this is going to give her a lot of people heartburn.
And I think that's why, why Councilmember Erickson got the call, because it's like-
It was like, what is this? What?
Right, right.
Big brothers looking at us type of thing, and it was, it's a scary-
Sorry to slow you down, but I think-
But it's a good point, because it's a scary proposition for some-
If I can jump in with one thing before we jump to that, we are finally starting to get some of our back-ordered water meters in place. We are hoping to be able to do this with a water meter changeout as we start to get those meters, so it won't be the, the singular inspection and having to come back. So we're hoping to be able to get a little bit more traction as it's just, it's part of your water meter changeout. Most people are, are fairly familiar with that.
Yeah. Traditionally, the DNR, uh, links it to the ten-year water meter test, twenty-year changeout. So basically, we're getting into your house every ten years. So that's why you have the twenty-two hundred. It's ten percent based on twenty-two thousand meters and change that we have to do. Traditionally, when we don't have the supply chain issues, it's really easy. We take, we do water meter, we do your lead service survey, and then we do the, uh, essential cross-connection, all in one shot. Um, we tried, I tried to ask for forgiveness one more year because of supply chain issues, and the DNR said, no, we had to start as soon as possible. So we picked as many staff as we could and have done, the guys have done a tremendous job in it, and the community has slowly gained traction with the great promotional items we have. Uh, we set up really easy ways for people to scan QR codes to do everything automated, so, uh, they can sign up for appointments on their own or call our staff and get everything taken care of.
But I, I want to be clear, though, that we're looking strictly at water when we're going into people's homes.
Yes, definitely. Yep, water, and then anything in the immediate vicinity, like Steve said, that would pose a health issue, uh, and catastrophic failure if it would suck back into the system.
And, and I think, I just got one thing I'm going to add to that too quick, Steve, sorry. Um, you know, helping with that, that communication thing, uh, one of the things that, uh, Council, you're going to see on your agenda next week is a professional services agreement under the City Manager Report. Um, the department has been working with Communications Coordinator Andy Radek, and we are bringing onboard a public communication, public relations firm to help the department develop, uh, what we refer to as a strategic communications plan to help us come up with more effective communication strategies for challenging topics like this. And then, uh, once we get that plan developed, which should only take a few months, uh, we're going to move right into the implementation of it as well. So that'll be a separate agreement that Council will see once we get the plan, uh, prepared. But that is something that, you know, in our work with, uh, Communications Coordinator Radek, he's like, you know, he's spread across pretty much every department except for police and fire, and he helps them as well. Um, and as I was working with him, he's like, "I, I just don't have the time." Uh, so we're, we're bringing a consultant onboard to help us get things moving and help us develop some communication strategies and plans to, to really help get that information out, to, to hopefully allay some of those concerns when people get these messages. So I just wanted to throw that out there, that we're, we're bringing in a professional to help us, you know, get these communication plans moving forward.
I've got, I hate doing this to you guys, but out of the inspections that we're doing, and, and just guess, just guess at this, but how many, how many inspections are, are coming back negative or somewhat negative on, on?
Residential side, we have not had any fail because we are supplying the, um, backflow preventers to them. So basically, anybody we go into, if that's the only failure point, we give them to them, we install them. If they don't want us to install them, we give them to you and assume that at that point you've come on and you're good to go. If there's more severe issues, we flag it as non-compliant and then gets kicked back to our inspections department for follow-ups.
Okay.
But as of right now, as of the, like I said, we're at that, like, eighteen-hundred-ish, nineteen-hundred for the year, I believe. Out of that, we haven't had a single one fail more than just the backflow preventers being installed.
Okay, good. Thank you. You guys are doing a bang-up job, so.
Thanks.
I didn't realize that was a truck roll. I mean, I just-
Yeah, it isn't, yeah.
It didn't used to be.
Didn't used to be.
It didn't used to be, but it is now.
Well, and, I, I mean, just knowing a little bit about truck rolls, sometimes people forget. So you got a truck roll, you're, can't get into the house, you've got to reschedule it. I mean, it's, it's, uh-
Sorry, Steve, I'll turn it back over to continue that discussion.
Well, that's fine. Um, the next item out of the sanitary survey that has, uh, increased , uh, distributions tasks, um, we now have to annually exercise, um, approximately twen- uh- um we now have to annually exercise um approximately twenty percent of the valve valves in the city that are under the city's ownership. So all the mainline valves or any service valves um for the larger services that go into properties by water service. That's about seventeen hundred unique valves per year that a utility staff member has to get out to connect to the valve-turning apparatus and turn down and back up to make sure that that valve is staying functional in case it is needed during an emergency um emergency event. Prior to that, um it just wasn't a priority with DNR staff. Uh we turned numerous valves every year because of our construction projects and everything and that had been adequate. Um that's no longer the case. We have to actually go out and tend to make sure we're turning eight different, seventeen hundred different valves every year um through a rotation through the city so that on a five-year cycle, we have been theory turning every valve in the city once. Um and as we've talked about before, there's the lead-in copper rule revision that is going to affect in October of twenty twenty-four. That has a lot of requirements going in with it that are going to dramatically change um what the city has historically done and what and the information we need to provide. As part of that, uh by the date in October of twenty-four, we have to have a uh public and private side service line inventory for all properties in the city. It doesn't necessarily have to be filed, meaning we know what it is. If we don't have a decent record of what it is, we can categorize that as an unknown and um through continuous improvements of getting out record, getting out, once we do get into a home or building to inspect it, uh if we have a construction project, they can confirm the material when it's excavated, we'll continue to update that. The downside to that is we're at about eleven thousand unknown private side reservoirs at this point in time. Approximately ten thousand of those were installed prior to nineteen sixty-one. Based on all of the records, research that we've done, uh nineteen fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty is about the last time a led lateral we can find any record of was installed in the city. So beyond that sixty-one, we're saying beyond that point then is is going to be a non-lead material, so we'll be okay in not having to do that. But that's ten thousand on the private side that we don't know and nine thousand on the public side that we don't know. And of that, nine thousand, about sixty-five hundred of those could be led as well because of prior to nineteen sixty-one. What's gonna happen after the October of twenty-four, when the new requirements go in for the sampling requirements for homes with lead service lines and the action level getting reduced is the city's, the samples coming out of these homes after the water has sat for overnight six, eight hours is going to exceed the lead threshold that's allowed to be in drinking water. Once the water's flushed out of the line after that six, eight hours, if you flush that uh that first, you run your line for a minute or two and get that cleared out, the water would pass, but the new sampling requirements are requiring us to sample those initial um stagnant water takes. And that is going to kick us into a requirement of needing to replace three percent of the lead or unknown laterals per year. So the higher that unknown number is going into twenty twenty-four, it's going to mean that we have to do more required, more replacements on an annual basis. They've also stipulated that confirming an unknown is not lead will not count toward your number of um replacements. So the higher number of unknowns we have and we can go out there and and dig one up and determine, well, it is, it's copper galvanized, it doesn't have to be replaced, that doesn't count as a replacement. We just have to fill the hole back in and go on to the the next property until we get our three percent done on an annual basis. So we really want to concentrate on trying to get into some of these areas with the unknowns and really get into and trying to um pothole certain areas of the backdrop to try to find those materials, really increase the inspections inside of the homes in the next uh until October of twenty-four so we can get those materials confirmed and hopefully reduce that number of unknowns dramatically.
And they can't self-certify?
No.
Okay.
Is there any pattern? I mean, any any percentage that turn out to be lead that you know of of the unknowns?
Yeah, it's it's less than we had originally thought. There have been a number of private side ones that have been done over the years and we simply don't have a record of it on on that side. Uh the public side, our records are a little better on because it's something historically done. Uh we do have unfortunately a number of them that don't specify what material they were, but based on age, we can be a little bit more confident in what those materials are.
Okay, so age sounds like the factor to the estimate.
Yes, it really, it is our best estimate at this point in time is based on age.
Well, a question, um I know for a number of years we've been talking about um this. I think this goes back to two thousand and sixteen when I first came on council um about because of the number of lead lines that we have and the presumed number in the unknowns that folks should run their um faucets for two minutes every morning to flush anything, right?
Run it till it gets cold.
And so I guess the question there is, do we have any sense of how much that equals in terms of cost to uh folks in those homes that are built prior to nineteen sixty-one in terms of the the water costs on a daily basis?
It really depends on the the size of lateral that's serving your home and and the length. Uh we could certainly run the the numbers.
Brad, can you?
Based on some of our sequential sampling that we had done last year, by the time we hit the fifteen to twenty liter mark of water through the water service, we've already reached fresh water from the water main. So it's not as large of a quantity as what one would expect. So usually by the twentieth liter, you're already getting into that fresh water from the water main.
I I guess what I'm asking is if um if one was to run the line um for two minutes every day, three hundred and sixty-five days, um how much wasted water are they paying for cubic feet?
I I mean, you have to do the math, it would be the the twenty liters a day times the three hundred and sixty-five days.
Okay.
And then converting that to hundreds of cubic feet. So we've got lots of units and conversions in there to figure out what it is, but um ten bucks. Well, twenty liters is about one and a half gallons, five gallons. Five gallons a day times three sixty-five, that's about sixteen hundred, right? Sixteen thousand, sixteen hundred.
We haven't done the math. We're trying to do it in our head.
But but suffice it to say, it's not, it's not negligible, the the costs.
I I'm not gonna make that surmise without actually trying to do the do the math and figure out exactly what it is. Uh I would say it it probably is significantly less than what is used on a daily basis.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Given that um this is really an age problem, right? We we know, you know, certain certain timeframe of homes are your unknowns. We roughly know where those homes are built, where they're located. Your programming, your your outreach efforts, specifically in the next year to two years should be and probably is focused on that space more than, we'll just say, the west, you know, the far west side or anything newer, right? We're 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 honing in on the unknown areas.
We started in the downtown area with the.
Central city.
Inspection and everything and trying to target the older areas to hopefully get get those first, yes.
Are we using any of the county data that's already been collected, um the mapping and that from the lead contamination? Those, uh I think there is uh data available at the county level that um is has been mapped to show where um like children who are coming up with a lead poisoning above the, was it five picos or I can't remember what the measurement is? Are we using any of their data that's already been done to kind of hone in?
There are so many other potential areas of contamination, it's it's hard to draw a direct line. Um I don't know that we have l- looked at a lot of their stuff. We're we're focusing on the information that we have available as far as our infrastructure uh and what the records are for the plumbing. And, you know, as as Ryan said, once they get in to start working on the meter program again, uh that's gonna really expedite the development of that uh that database.
I'm just saying, if we've got um eleven thousand unknown private site, right? And and all these thousands of unknowns, would it make sense to look at their map and their data where they've shown that children have lead poisoning to address some of our unknowns where that where it is known?
There's too many other sources of lead.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
So the 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 paint and everything.
Gotcha.
The water is actually a much less likely source of a lead contamination than many of the other, than the other sources are. So using that data, I think, might put us into a perceived area where they could have a perfectly fine lateral, but if there's old lead paint that is in the child room, it's going to have a much greater impact.
Okay, I understand.
All right, um so kind of continuing, one of the other changes with the lead-in copper rules now gonna require that the city has replaced, if a private side is replaced on their, they would do their lateral under either because of a city construction project that is ongoing or simply they have a break or elect to do it voluntarily, the city will now have to have the public side done within forty-five days of being notified that that private lateral has been done. So that's taking our hundred and eighty days and dramatically reducing that. We are struggling to even figure out how that's going to work within our construction projects because forty-five days within the construction project itself is going to be a daunting task in order to work with that. So that is a, one of the rules that's put a really needs some thought and correct practical work process development over the next year and a half. They also just announced that they are now coming up with the lead-in copper rule improvement, different than the lead-in copper rule. Um this is still in its development stage at DCA. We don't have a lot of information on it other than they plan to issue it prior to the October, October twenty twenty-four rollout of the lead-in copper rule. So we'll just be uh getting up and going on the lead-in copper rule and the next phase of the lead-in copper improvement program will be rolled out uh for us to try to start complying with.
I I think I know the answer to this question, but do any of these changes come with any corresponding aid from the federal government or state?
Government.
James is just laughing at me.
I'm not laughing at you.
I know the answer to the question, but.
So that's.
Not laughing with you.
The bipartisan infrastructure.
There are, there are some opportunities with the bipartisan infrastructure law.
I like your.
But it it's not because of the changes, it's just, you know, I think some of these changes are just happening to coincide, but there is some potential, I think, for bipartisan infrastructure law money to be used, uh at least for the next couple of years.
I was gonna say, how long does that last?
It was a five-year program and so, you know, we're already at least one year into it, so.
And the rule is not a five-year rule?
What's that?
The changes from coming from the EPA are not temporary?
No.
Okay.
But I, the the real challenge for you guys is the forty-five day window. I mean, it it just, try to find a contractor to show up in six months, let alone forty-five days.
And a lot of our public side ones, Ryan and his staff have been dealing with and and that gets to the point of the maintenance worker positions that are the enhancement that Steve is talking about is, you know, to to really be able to have two crews available of city staff to go out and do those things. Because you're right, you can't get a contractor. And and that's the challenge that homeowners are having right now is, okay, yeah, you've replaced your side, but I uh I can't even get anybody to call me back to do the other side.
And and this is the next wonderful caveat of the lead-in copper rule. When we do the public side and if the private side has, happens to be a lead or galvanized pipe that was downstream of a lead public one, we now have to offer to do the private side. So how that is going to be implemented yet is uh going to be interesting. Um our staff legally under the state can't go into the home and do the connection um because we are not um licensed plumbers or utility contractors. So another wonderful twist of how we're going to figure out how we have to get into the homes and actually complete that uh private side replacement when we do a public side replacement for a project.
So this is just another new nightmare.
Same nightmare over.
Yeah.
Just add a different twist.
We're one of the only contractors in the city.
Um so that's um as James alluded to, we're seeking two additional um water maintenance workers to essentially allow the city to have two crews uh to do what? To do surface line replacements uh when the weather is conductive in doing those. That's the other thing the EPA and DNR said, they haven't figured out how they're going to deal with uh winter season when it's not practical or safe to necessarily be replacing the lead service lateral and in our winters longer than forty-five days. Um so essentially, one crew can usually do a a single long-side lateral in a day or two short-side laterals if they're in close proximity. We wanna get those staff added now, start getting them trained and experienced in doing this work so that when we hit twenty twenty-four, we can truly be rolling and ready to do these water laterals and meet that uh three percent per year um replacement that we are, we know is coming down, down the line. With the two additional staff then, during the non-digging time, hopefully we'll be able to still complete all of the other tests that were, that water utility does, all of the water main breaks, valve repairs, hydrant flushing, all of the other activities, including and the cross connection control, the valve exercising. So the staff will be busy um in the non, non-time trying to keep up with those other activities that they pull off of while they're doing the lead service line replacements. Um the third request is for an additional operator. Um that's the one that's not in the book. I'm sure council recalls that last year we added a sixth operator.
It was a couple years ago. Yeah, I think it was Brad.
Two years ago, okay.
Two years ago, we added a sixth operator. Um we are continuing to have a difficult time filling those positions. Um we are getting some qualified candidates to apply. Um however, they're generally taking a look at the schedule um that's presented and um decline, uh several of them have declined the position as a result of the schedule.
Are we working on the schedule?
We have, we've we've do the schedule as much as we can. Uh to do that with the sixth operator, um the big, one of the biggest complaints, and Brad, if you wanna jump up here to help fill the in the gaps on this, would be appreciated. Um but um essentially with six operators and needing three operators to cover every weekend with the three shifts, you're looking at working every other weekend with um the three op, with the six operators.
Everybody wants to do that.
Yes, that that's, that's a wonderful, wonderful sales pitch to to recruit new people.
Especially during summer.
Every other weekend and second and third shift, it's a seven-day in a row run. So that's, it's it's a difficult recruiting tool.
Can you explain or can you explain to everybody watching this, the the schedule and the the need to have this? I I mean, it's, it, I wouldn't take a look at this job if you doubled the salary. Well.
To explain the schedule i- is quite difficult and we actually, that's part of when when we do interviews with candidates, we provide them with a copy of the schedule and they grab and look at it, oh, that's not so bad. And then they get the job offer after they've had a couple days to digest the schedule and talk it over with their family and it's like, never mind.
Or they look at anybody else's schedule.
Right.
The other job offer.
We're competing against um groundwater facilities, groundwater municipalities that work seven to three, they're on call every third weekend for approximately the same same wages. We're manning, staffing the water filtration plant three sixty-five, twenty-four seven. And and that's, that's a, it's tough to find the right individual that can thrive on shift work. It 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 does take a a special individual that can thrive on shift work from a specialized group of people that are in uh the water industry in the first place.
Yeah, and comparatively, the wastewater treatment plant has the same schedule. They have eight operators, um and it's significantly less impactful. And I, Jason, you worked that schedule. Um you know, it's it's significantly less impactful to the schedule. Long-term, we know that's where we really need to be with uh the water filtration plant is at eight to really help that schedule, but, you know, we also knew that, you know, coming in here and asking you for two today wasn't uh wasn't prudent either. So we want to work towards getting to that eight position by getting to seven now to try and help reduce that strain on that shift work.
Yeah, and like James said, I worked at the wastewater plant, the operations schedule for almost thirteen years, so I have a very intimate knowledge of how painful it can be. Um like Brad said, it takes a special individual. It gets really difficult when you have a family and kids. Um so having the extra operators, as James said, uh we, when I started at the wastewater plant twenty-three years ago, we had six operators and it was rough. Um there are. There are some other tweaks to the schedule that we can be looking at as well to make it so that the schedule's known for the year versus just, you know, two weeks notice or a month notice. And that's something I'm going to sit down with Brad and Steve and James and we'll go over that. Look at some different aspects of not just the numbers and the math. Because no matter how many, you know, you can add fifteen operators and everybody gets to work one weekend, but that's not practical. So there's a happy medium balance that we have to find. And it works well at the wastewater plant. We have, as James said, we have eight there. It's a little bit bigger facility, but you know, three sixty-five, twenty-four seven, somebody has to be there. And I think, I think we can find the right balance, but it's going to take a little bit of work, but I think we'll move it, we'll get there.
And just for additional information, the seventh operator would have approximately four weekends per year off for each of the operators as hell would work out. So it's not, not a huge increase from the every other, but it does add, add a little bit of weekends off. And just as a little bit of an example on how some of the shift coverage issues. If there's not an operator that is willing or able to take on a open operatorship, all of the maintenance staff at the water filtration plant are certified operators. They are our next step to do that. In going through twenty nineteen, twenty and twenty-one in succession, we lost twenty-nine maintenance shifts in nineteen, seventy-nine in twenty and forty-three shifts in twenty-one of maintenance activities. So those staff members could cover operator positions that were not filled by other operators either due to lack of staffing or inability, asking an operator to work an eight-hour shift, get, get home and come back in eight hours later isn't a real popular item to do, especially when it involves going from first shift to third shift and back to first shift the following day. It's, it's, it's a pretty brutal schedule as Jason alluded to. So those maintenance shifts are a lot, lost maintenance times. And when we are shorter on those staff times, the operators on first shift when we have additional operators, they go work with the maintenance staff then when we're full staffed to help perform and get additional maintenance tests done, use it as cross-training so those operators then can hopefully move up to one of the maintenance positions going down the line. When we don't have enough staff to even fill the operator positions, there's no operators available to even go assist the operators or get the training to be able to move forward. So.
Working with the maintenance staff has shown that, I don't have tangential evidence, but it, they become better operators by understanding the maintenance side. They're able to walk by a pump and, okay, that doesn't sound quite right. This is what's going on. Then they can call the maintenance staff in and say, this is what needs to be repaired. And then the maintenance staff can execute those repairs in a quicker manner as well. So it, it, having them cross-trained and working hand in hand like that makes it a more efficient operation.
That's all I have on the three positions of the water distribution. The other one that's in with the water, which is listed under the wastewater utility is a little bit of a cross between the two, but we'll save that for that.
Any other questions on water utility? Gotta pick up the pace, he slows down.
Well, I slowed him down with all the questions.
Thank you, Brad. If there's no other questions on the water utility, wastewater utility on page three eighty-nine. You know, treats all of the waste collected not only from the city, but also from the five sanitary districts around us in the towns of Algoma, Black Wolf and Oshkosh. Continues to focus on reducing clear water inflow and infiltration into the system. To date, we have had a significantly positive impact on wet weather flows to the wastewater treatment plant. Rainfall events that in the past we would reach a hundred-plus million gallons a day coming into the plant, we're now only hitting fifty to sixty at times. So we've had significant improvements, but we got to keep, keep at it because if we stop, we're just going to revert back to where we were at. Some of the key accomplishments, you know, continuing to work on that Oregon interceptor. We've continued to participate in this Wisconsin State Lab of Hygiene COVID-nineteen wastewater study. We are working on, and by the end of the year, we'll have completed an asset management plan update. And we'll also have a facilities plan update completed by the end of the year. For council's knowledge, we will be holding a public hearing on the facility plan update at the December Common Council meeting. So that's something that will be coming up before you. There will be a public information meeting held in late November on that facility plan update. Some of the sewer utility budget impacts, you know, we continue to see increase in regulatory requirements. You know, we're, the primary focus of the facility plan is dealing with phosphorus reduction. So that is one of the big things that we're working on. As we mentioned before, we shifted three equipment operators from wastewater to the Field Operations Internal Service Fund. Overall, the, the primary impact and the increase in the, the budget in the sewer utility is due to skyrocketing chemical costs. The costs per ton for liquid chlorine alone have quadrupled during twenty twenty alone. And based on our communications with the chemical industry professionals, we don't see that changing and going back down. Yeah, twenty twenty-two. We've, those costs have quadrupled this year alone. Twenty twenty-three, we'll see us completing an application for another five years of coverage under our wastewater permit to discharge wastewater to the Fox River and Campbell Creek. And one addition on the, on page three eighty-nine of your next book that comes out, there'll be an additional goal added for twenty twenty-three of beginning the implementation of the facility plan and the phosphorus reduction project. Steve briefly mentioned an enhancement that's proposed to be shared between sewer and water. So if you could kind of quickly go through that one, Steve?
I'll keep this one a lot shorter. So this position we're looking for is basically a capital improvement program technician. We're looking for someone to help the two utilities go through their capital projects and assist with the capital project management for the next foreseeable future. We have approximately a hundred and thirty-three million in wastewater projects in the next ten years and ninety-three million in water projects in the next three years. Breaking that down, actually, there's about, of the wastewater, about seventy-eight million dollars of that is wastewater plant and lift station project alone. So none of the projects that engineering would typically manage. And for water, it's about ninety-three million of projects that, again, engineering wouldn't manage. So those, so we're looking at almost a hundred and fifty million dollars in projects over the next ten years to try to manage through the two facilities themselves and their assets to try and create that. In addition, we have several projects that are in the back of this point in time where we haven't been able to get them moving through designs, bidding and construction phase to get them implemented. They've been improving the CIP. We just haven't been able to get them going. So we're looking for a staff person to really concentrate on those capital projects and help get them moving, deal with the construction management and contract closeout. Keep a brief to that, so hopefully.
Any questions on sewer wastewater utility?
I just noticed the contracted services going up significantly. Curious if you know what that, what that's referring to. It's item six, four, one, seven. That'd be a Russ question.
Four, one, seven.
I think that's part of that object code.
Yeah.
And reconfiguration.
That, that's exactly what it is. It's kind of the mashup of the object codes and things getting moved around and shuffled around. And one of the big focuses that we're going to have in all three utilities this year is because of that change in twenty twenty-two, we're gonna, as we start moving forward and getting preparing for budget next year, we're going to be making a very conscious effort to make sure that we're looking at how things are charging out so we can get them put back in, in the right place based on the new object codes.
Thank you.
All right, if nothing else on wastewater, stormwater utility is on page three ninety-five. You can, if you want to, Jason, thank you. Stormwater utility services falling into the improvement maintainer infrastructure section of the city strategic plan as their primary mission is to reduce flooding and manage stormwater runoff throughout the city. Stormwater utility is also generally responsible for ensuring that the city complies with the requirements of the DNR municipal separate storm sewer system permit. Realistically, that's a water quality-based requirements and that permit's issued in accordance with the Federal Clean Water Act. So stormwater utility manages that component of it for the city. Some key accomplishments, completing the design and construction of the storm lateral mini-storm project. Continuing to update the citywide stormwater management quality plan for compliance with the EPA-approved Upper Fox River and Wolf River TMDL total maximum daily load. We are expecting that document to be completed by the end of this year. Justin, if you're back there, you want to come up here? I believe we are going to be, once the Stormwater Utility Appeals Board and DNR have provided us comments on that plan, we would be looking to bring that forward to the Common Council for approval of the plan so that we can move forward and help us plan implementation of that plan.
What is the areas of the Parkway Basin?
What's that?
What are the areas of that Parkway Basin there on the?
What do you mean the areas?
The land acquisition there?
Oh, the land acquisition, that is six sixteen Broad, Grand Street and the vacant land adjacent to the Canadian National Railroad. So primary detention basin location is in land we are acquiring from the railroad. Common Council approved that.
I guess it's been a few months.
Almost a year ago, yeah.
Yeah.
We're in the final stages of getting that executed with the railroad. The six sixteen Grand site is where the storm sewer is going to go from Grand Street into the basin. That property's been acquired.
Actually, the house was demoed, I think, last week.
Yeah, streets, field operations, Internal Service Fund demolished that first stormwater. And then the Gallup-Smerits Bridge Construction over Oregon Street was completed with the Oregon Street Project last year. That's two out of three bridges in quick succession over Gallup-Smerits Creek that have been replaced with the third one coming on the Bradley Street Project in twenty twenty-three. Stormwater utility budget impacts, we've talked a lot about it, the five equipment operators moving from stormwater utility to the Field Operations Internal Service Fund. And the costs being then applied back through the inter-fund transfers or inter-fund chargebacks. And as I mentioned, when we were talking about the Field Operations Internal Service Fund, stormwater utility was actually receiving more benefit than it was paying for previously. So this shift and using the work order and asset management software will help us make sure that we're more appropriately putting those charges where they should be.
The, again, a question I always get is, this is turn of profit. And just seeing that our revenues for this year earned the budget are four million higher than expenses. And just curious if you could share with the community, what happens with those funds?
A lot of those funds are used to meet our borrowing bond covenants. The bond covenants, I believe the stormwater is a one-point-two. So for every dollar that we borrow, we have to have an additional twenty cents more in revenue. So that's, that's a big part of it. And then annually, we evaluate the cash position and we'll pay for capital projects with cash or use cash to, to bring down borrowing for projects. So, you know, you, with that bond covenant, it has a history of, you know, trying to build money. We use that money to reduce borrowing or pay for capital projects straight up out of cash.
Thank you. Were you talking about the rates?
Yeah, he was, he was asking about the, the cash buildup. So I was talking about how, you know, the bond covenant, you know, it has a tendency to build cash and we use that then to reduce our borrowing or just pay for capital. Any, any other thoughts? I think that's the primary way we do that is.
Correct. And usually we have elders help us out on all of the utilities. Water, obviously, we are in front of the Public Service Commission now to do a water rate application. We've had a couple of go-arounds with requests for additional information after our initial submission. We're still working on that. For the sanitary sewer and stormwater revenue charges or the fee structures. We should have something from elders by the end of this week, early next week. So we'll be presenting that as a separate council consideration of prior to the adoption of the budget.
Kind of piggyback on what Mike was asking, I mean, can we show that differently so it doesn't almost show up like a, like a profit? Because, because it looks like there's a, and I know you get mad when I, when I get to the P and L and try to compare real world with city world, but.
Well, you know, the water sewer and stormwater is as close to real business that you have. Unfortunately, we don't have owner's equity as the bottom line. We have our net fu, fund position. It used to be retained earnings. What is it called now?
The new accounting term for retained earnings?
Still retained earnings.
No, it's not.
No. Oh, my God, fund balance reserve.
I'm an old-school guy, so it's still fund balance retained earnings to me. But it is the new term for it. And anyways, as James was explaining, some of that is required just to meet our bond covenants.
So we just have to show it that way? I just think, I just think to the average person, it looks like we're.
I know.
We actually were questioned by the Chamber of Commerce. We talked about that and they were looking at our general fund balance and our utility fund balance in the same way. But the utilities, because they're, they're more like a business operation, all of our assets, which we cannot liquidate, we can't liquidate our stormwater ponds, but that's listed as an asset.
It'd be hard to sell that big tank in the parking lot out front.
Yeah, I mean, we basically, our biggest assets are holes in the ground.
But you can, you can see where the confusion.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
So I.
Trying to, trying to tell that story is very difficult.
I, I just grabbed the financial statements and we didn't talk about this when they made their presentation, but just look at the stormwater utility. Our total assets, it's hard to believe, it's not hard to believe for me, but we have a hundred and fifty-five million dollars in assets in our stormwater.
I believe that.
You know, and, and that's not cash. So that flows through the bottom line. If you look at the balance sheet item, you know, we have current assets of, in the stormwater, twenty-five million. Our non-current assets, long-term assets, a hundred and fifty-five. Our liabilities are six, our current liabilities. Our non-current liabilities are eighty-nine million dollars. We have sixty-five point seven in our net position, which is now the new term for retained earnings or.
But when we increase rates by seven, eight percent and they take a look at our fund balance, why do you need to increase your rates by seven, eight percent?
And it's a fair question.
Yeah, and it's like, well, that, but that's not cash. It's, it's, it's all.
It's primarily to meet the borrowing requirements and the bond covenants. That's what drives the rates because the utility is still very young and it's very capital-driven. You know, if you look at the, you know, you look at the overall, it's, there's not a lot of personnel and expenses. Depreciation and interest expenses are, are the big costs in the stormwater utility. And, you know, paying off those, those borrowings that, you know, built that infrastructure to manage the stormwater.
So if you look at stormwater itself from last year, you know, our, our operating revenue is about twelve million dollars. Our operating expenses are about four. So we have operating income of seven million dollars, but we also have two million dollars in non-operating revenue and expenses. We've got two point six million dollars of non-operating expenses. So we showed a range of five million dollars. But again, a lot of that is driven by what we have to have in play for our bond covenant, covenants.
Contrast our ongoing discussions that we've had about the police department. Chief Smith talks about ninety-five percent of our budget is personnel. You look at the stormwater utility, less than ten percent of their budget is personnel-related. So it's not heavy on operating costs. It's heavy on capital and assets and everything. So it's a totally different business type of operation.
And we get to take advantage of the depreciation and everything?
Just like a normal business one, yes. Yeah. So, yeah, there is, uh, let's see, was depreciation about two point four million dollars last year? But we also had, uh, interest expense of two point six million dollars. That's basically bond or debt interest expense.
So half our budget are those two line items.
You still are a budget analyst, aren't you?
So I'm not sure if we have an updated map of this. This, this last one was from July two thousand and ten of the stormwater drainage basins on the east side of town. So we've got the outfalls that were upgraded, or I'm sorry, detention basins plus culvert and outfall upgrades.
There's a, I know there's an interactive stormwater utility map that Justin, I believe, has a lot, has more keeping up with those projects versus that static map that you have pulled up.
Okay.
They've created an interactive GIS map similar to our interactive CIP map.
So the question is, some folks here in Oshkosh had asked to meet not too long ago and they said, and, and a lot of this work was done like two thousand and eight, two thousand and ten, that timeframe, obviously. and they said, and a lot of this work was done like 2008, 2010, that timeframe, obviously, we've done more since then, but to the point that several of these, like, upgraded outfalls, their question was, when we upgraded and went larger, and obviously, we're getting water off the streets and dealing with our stormwater, but did that contribute to some of the conditions in Miller's Bay by kind of feeding some of the, I don't know, the weed problem and some of the other issues there?
No, because we didn't divert any water from anywhere else. That water was all going there anyways.
Sure. It was just how fast and how much at once then.
Yeah, but the vegetation is going to be driven by the nutrients that are in the water, and that's going to get there anyhow.
Sure.
So, we haven't diverted water from somewhere else to that Miller's Bay area. It's all the same water. It's all the same nutrients coming from how residents are managing their lawn.
So, none of that's parcolated through when it was unfortunately backed up in, like, streets when it wasn't being carried more efficiently out there? That's what their question was.
No, because at that point in time, the ground is so saturated, it's not doing any treatment, it's just waiting for the system to carry it away.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
But there is an updated interactive...
There's the interactive map. We're doing a better job keeping that updated over the last couple of years. We're also working with and getting all of our maps, static maps, updated, and that should be online here in the next month or two.
Great.
But that interactive map, I believe, is available off the Stormwater Utility page.
Stormwater Utility page, okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions on Stormwater Utility? If not, that was the last of my budgets. I see I've run a few minutes over. I apologize for that, but we'll get you into your break, and everyone have a great day. Thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
The good news is, since we started with Mr. Fitzpatrick and Administrative Services yesterday, we got through some of that, so we can still do a 10-minute break.
Yeah. We've got...
The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on-demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on-demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on-demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on-demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on-demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on-demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on-demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on-demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on-demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on-demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on-demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on-demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly.
I just wanted to start by saying, I hope I didn't rush through our things so quickly. I know we were a little crunched for time, and I didn't mean to go faster than you wanted. So, please, if you have any questions for me, interrupt me. I've been answering anything that you want to ask me or our managers about. Before we get into General Services, which is John Urban's area, I'd like to just mention that there was an enhancement that we didn't talk about yesterday, and that was related to safety. It's been an enhancement that we asked for a while regarding a safety glasses program. So, Michelle Benke is here, and she'd be happy to speak to that in greater detail if you want. I know I've talked to you about it in the past, but I guess I'd just ask you to take a look at that, and if you have any questions, let me know or let Michelle know.
Where is that?
Number seven on page 35.
That reimbursement?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, I'm glad you pointed that out, because I could barely read the safety glasses part with my glasses.
It does a little small print. So, without any further ado, then, let's talk about General Services. And as I mentioned yesterday briefly, John is responsible for purchasing, which we covered yesterday, but also facilities maintenance, Oshkosh Media, a variety of other budgets that we'll get to in a few moments, like the convention center ramp, the parking ramp. He's got a whole variety of things that we have in his area. But let's start with Oshkosh Media, how about that? That's on page 123. And I guess we're, I'm going to ask Jake to come up too, so we can talk a little bit. Jake is the lead worker for Oshkosh Media, and I think you know that they do a fantastic job. We have so many awards that they've won that we don't have room to display them all. And so, we're very proud of the work that they do to engage the community and be transparent and share all the decision-making that you're involved in and also boards and commissions are involved in. So, I think, I'll just turn it over to John and Jake and let them talk about this budget a little bit.
All right, well, I'll start off. First off, we're still on the air, even though Jake is sitting at the table. That's a good thing.
So, we don't need him, is what you're saying. You hit autopilot?
Robots. But some of the accomplishments that Jake and the team down there have worked on this last year, they formed a working group with the other department's social media reps. That's been a very productive group. They're working on social media strategies, and that's something that's obviously top of mind for all of us. So, that's been going well. John talked about the awards. It's always good to be recognized by your peers across the state on the fine work that they do, and so congratulations to our folks on all that. They also launched the City of Oshkosh Government Facebook page. As you know, there's been various iterations of Facebook that we've been on. Now, we actually have an official City of Oshkosh page, and that's been going well and getting a lot of good response with that. Some new programs they started there, Let's Talk Events is one that's been popular. And then later this, probably in the next couple of weeks or month, we're going to be doing a little bit of a mini facelift down there to kind of get some new paint on the walls and some new carpet that's well-needed down there. So, there's going to be a little fresher look down there when people come down there and so forth. As far as next year, some of the goals in the CIP, there's to replace some of the AV equipment for, it's at the end of service life, so to speak, with that. They're also looking at continuing on expanding the podcast platform and getting some initial good response from GovTV programs and so forth. Polco has been a large focus of what they've been working on, and he's been doing a lot of the Polco stuff, and we've been trying to take advantage of that whenever again for helping with the community input. And the drone has been well-received. The Friends of OCM, our nonprofit group that helps support our mission, they bought that drone, was it two years ago?
I think so, yeah.
Two years ago, and that drone's been... And that drone's been something you guys have incorporated into programming and other things, and that's been well received, especially a lot of the community development and public works projects.
Right, yeah, we've taken, maybe you've seen Alamo Boulevard, or stormwater projects, or basins that we've done flyovers on. It's great for beauty shots, and the parks look nice, and people really like the video on social media, it gets a lot of attention, but to give people a vantage point of kind of a bird's eye view of construction projects and other big, and especially with facilities too. I mean, as facilities go down and new ones get built, we'll be able to document that from a historical and operational standpoint, so it's a really nice tool to have.
So as far as operational budgetary impact and so forth, there really aren't a lot of major changes on the budget. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions you might have with that, but...
Are the enhancements, they include more mics?
Yes.
It's just the distribution. I'm hogging two down here, so it's not a problem.
Well, you need them.
It's like a Broadway show, you want to hang down from the ceiling, capture the whole room.
Yeah, we don't want to take up all the time that we might need to when we talk about Roloff and his needs when he's on the air and all the other accoutrements.
Keep talking Fitz.
I see there's a makeup artist in here under your budget.
There's nothing else on Oshkosh Media. The next budget that I think we would talk about would be the Grand Opera House. So that's located on page 363. Thanks Jake. And I think you know that we've been working very hard to improve our relationship with the Grand Opera House Board. The council was involved in updating their contract, and so was City Manager Roloff, John Urban and I, not too long ago. I think one thing that we've done, and I think John has been instrumental in this, not only with the Grand Opera House, but we'll talk about the convention center next, and their operators, is just making sure that they understand how our budget works, how the CIP works, and how they're competing with some projects that the community is very interested in and are more practically oriented, like road improvements. So I think they, John has done a very good job working with them on a longer range planning so they can program their needs, so they can make them known, so we can also try to give them an opportunity to plan and realize some of the improvements that they need. So that's something that I'm certainly very proud of, and I know John has worked very hard on, but I'll let him talk a little bit more about some of the things that are going on with the Grand Opera House.
And as John says, we have operating lease agreements with the Grand Opera House Foundation as well as the convention center, the hotel owners, and both groups are very easy to work with, and both on the same track, and we want them to both be successful in the missions of what they're trying to do there. So it's been a very good relationship, as John said. We work and meet with those folks on a regular basis to identify things that we need to address, both short term and long term, from a maintenance perspective. We have specific maintenance responsibilities in both those agreements. So, you know, as far as starting with the grand for 2022, some of the things we've done there, I think they're listed, but we replaced the stage floor, that was a big project at the grand this year, they were very excited to have that done. That's been on the list for many, many years. It got done in time and under budget, in time for their performance season, so they're very happy about that. We also cleaned up the steps. The steps were rusting a little bit with some of the rebar and the railings, you can just hear that. The generator, you'll see the generator is a common item that's being replaced in many of our buildings, they're just kind of all coming due, and sadly with supply chain issues, generators are hard to get. So we start these processes, and you might say, geez, you've been working on this generator project for years. Well, that's the delay that we see with many of these items, these units coming in. So we hope to have that generator replaced at the grand by next year.
Don't we have a company that makes generators here in Oshkosh?
Well, we get them through state contracts, I mean through Sourcewell at a very good rate, through Caterpillar, and that was very much recommended to us from our other partners in the city, so we've been using those units. But this is a common delay with any generator, it's just taking forever to get these in. So hopefully by next summer, the emergency generator at the grand will be in. We're also doing the same at Fire Station 18 and the library as well, I think you're aware of some of those. So anyway. We also took care of some situations in the basement that we've been wanting to do. There's some basement lateral, plumbing lateral issues that we're going to be working on in the coming year. We worked on that this year to identify the next steps for that and so forth. And we also took care of some attic issues that were kind of creating some comfort issues within the main hall. But again, there's a lot of things going on there. I think the bottom line is, the grand foundation has been very cooperative in looking short term and long term with things, and so that relationship is going well. So from a budgetary review, there really isn't much to, that stands out, but certainly again, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have on the grand budget.
I don't have a mic, but the plumbing issue in the basement, that's...
We spent this year with our plumber, Dan Demsky, to identify where the issue is probably coming from with the basement. So we put money in the CIP, we think will address the issue.
And then office space. Can we dislocate them over there?
I'm not really involved with the office space discussions with them. That might be, that might be someone else to answer that. Is it transit?
No, I think it's something that they'd like to see long term.
Okay.
I just want to...
And I'm sorry, I didn't know that wasn't under your...
No, that particular item I have not really been involved with.
It's a long term issue, and I also want to, in full disclosure, say that that wasn't planned, that we didn't have a mic for you.
It probably wasn't, that's okay.
Anything else with the Grand Opera House? Okay, the next item would be on page 365, and that's the convention center. And, you know, as I mentioned earlier, convention center and our partners at the hotel, we are very much plugged into. We want to make sure they're successful, of course, just as John mentioned, and I think we have a real good working relationship with them. We, they're, in order for them to be successful, they need to make sure that their facility is updated on a very regular basis, much more regularly than our facilities. And we understand that for them to be competitive in the business marketplace. And I think, again, John has done a very good job working with their folks to identify what they need to have updated and when. So we have a schedule that we work on with them, and we try to program those changes in as necessary, in addition to the regular maintenance in terms of equipment and some of the things that we would ordinarily take care of. But from a cosmetic perspective, I think it's something that we've really been able to improve in order to make them successful. And we continue to work with them on a variety of different projects. So John, is there anything else you'd like to speak in a little more detail to?
I think you've covered the relationship side well with that, and the only thing I'll note is just some of the things we did in this past year with them. As you know, the air handler replacements are in the mezzanine of that building currently. They're in the process of being replaced, and they'll be put on the roof, which will greatly diminish the air volume issue we've experienced over the last several decades.
And some of the noise issues, I think, that were problematic.
So that should be done in the next several months. None of these projects move that fast, quite frankly, because you're always waiting for equipment. It's a common theme with this name of the stuff. So the contractors can do as much as they can, but ultimately there's just a long time on HVAC equipment and everything. So that's going to be a big project, and we decided to get that done in the next several months. We had a sanitary lateral issue back in the, I think that was late spring, early summer. Can't thank our public work staff enough for their assistance in helping us get that addressed. That was a big project, and it was sort of an emergency because it was part of the kitchen work with the convention center, and it impacted their operations. So public works folks, as well as our contractors and so forth, really got on it quickly, so thank you again to all those folks. We've been working to identify a replacement for the hardware and software of the exterior message sign you see there on CP. It's getting to be 10-plus years old, and that's typically when those systems start to fail, and so that's been on our radar, and we're going to continue to identify the specs for that. The intent was to help set out the bid later this year and have that ready for next year for more. And then we've been working with the, again, this is a situation where the folks there will come to us and say, hey, you know, it's been quite a few years now on some of these items we have, like the pub table, stage floors, et cetera, that are just, they're just getting used from overtime, and so we've been able to replace those and keep everything looking fresh and really keeping them competitive. That's the key for them, obviously, is to keep it, everything looking nice so that they can be competitive, and what's good for them is good for the city long term. So that's always in our goal. This coming year, of course, we're going to continue on with the air handler units, bids hopefully for the electronic messaging system. They're on the list like any of our buildings for the ADA improvements we've talked about that we're going to be working towards, so we're going to continue to work on getting those updated as we can, and of course, any other maintenance issues that they come to us with.
What is the issue with the electronic message system?
It's just hitting end of life with the computer there. The software, 10-plus years is kind of pushing it before it starts to have glitches, and we've had a few problems already with it, and we're kind of keeping our fingers crossed we can keep it moving, so.
So far, so good.
Question on the revenue side. The, so I see the room tax, the hotel tax has, seems to have recovered since 2020, but we don't know what happened before then, so I'm curious, is it back to where it was pre-COVID?
It's actually doing a little bit better. One of the things I wanted to talk about is, I find it somewhat difficult that the name of this fund is the Convention Center Fund, because we also account for our room tax collection and dispersments through here. So you'll see that the hotel room tax is at 1.9, which is up, that's probably the most. We have an obligation to pay, pay some of that to the Convention and Visitors Bureau, that's in contractual services, and then we also have the debt obligations out of that. And part of that line item in 6412 also includes a payment to the grand for a share of that, and that is benchmarked on the room tax collection. So once that gets above $2 million in room tax collections, our obligation to the grand goes from 185 to 200,000, is that correct?
200, yeah, 200.
And that's a component of the agreement that City Manager Roloff negotiated with the parties a few years ago. And I would just like to give a shout out to finance. You know, my experience with this budget over time has been one where it's very complex because of the room tax, but they've worked pretty hard to get this in a manageable form and hopefully easy to understand, so I think they did a real nice job with that.
Yeah, Russ gave a little background with that, and we have a conservative estimate for the revenues there for year end and for next year, but if we hit 2 million this year, then our obligation to the grand goes up to 200,000 for 2023. But that's actually good news, because I, when COVID hit, I didn't think we'd recover until 2025, and we're going to be two to three years early on that, on hitting the 2 million threshold, so. And that's why I told the grand, I didn't expect it, I just said, I'm sorry, we can't do it until we hit 2 million, then COVID hit. Now, the rebound has been so good that we're in decent shape. And just as a reminder, 60% of our room tax money goes to the CVB, and even in that CVB money, the Capital Development Fund, we talked about yesterday with the barriers for the police, I mean, Amy's been very good about being open to things that will benefit. So Amy is a great partner, and the CVB has been a great partner with and even before Amy. They were paying off the foundation loan for years when we were paying nothing.
On our behalf.
20, on our behalf. 20% of the funds are for debt service, and you see some debt service there, and those are for all the improvements when John and the hotel sit down and go over convention center improvements. That's got to come out of debt, the tax can't even exist without debt, so that debt is appropriate and beneficial. The last 20% goes to us, part of it is what we pay the grand, what we pay for some other facility, our share of the facilities cost at the convention center, and then some other things related to special events. So the fund is doing well, and I think we've got a good setup right now with that.
Yeah, so the special events coordinator comes out of this fund.
That's a position that's also included in this budget. Any other questions about the convention center? Okay, the next budget is on page 369, and that's the convention center parking ramp. And we have a unique responsibility with the convention center parking ramp, and that, our responsibility was established a long time ago in terms of who owns the property, who owns the building, and what we do with that. So we do our best to make sure that it's in as good a working condition as we possibly can. John has worked with some vendors over time, where we have a long range, I think it's a 10-year plan, John, to work on maintenance and upkeep of the ramp, to make sure that it's safe and in good working order, not only for the hoteliers there, but the convention center, and also people in the downtown area utilize that ramp. So we just renewed our plan, I believe we have a new vendor now, but I think we're poised to continue to make sure that that is a well-used and in good working condition facility for four years. You want to talk a little bit about that, John?
Sure, and actually with the operating agreement for the ramp and how that works, $3 of every motel or hotel stay at the hotel is put into this fund to then offset the maintenance costs that we incur, take care of it. So it's really been working well. As John said, our last 10-year maintenance plan expired. We continued on with the same engineering firm, WGI, to do another 10-year, and their projections are, based on what they project for 10 years out for maintenance, that fund at the $3 per night, based on where we're at with things, should be sufficient to cover any costs over the period of that 10 years. So we're feeling good about that, we've done a good job working with the hotel folks on addressing any issues they see along the way, so it's been going well.
Just to give everybody some background on that, because the turnover in council, you know, this is two councils ago practically. The land is actually owned, the land upon which the ground, the parking lot sits, is owned by City Center, Jim Larson, Kirk Kepler, that group. They have a, they've given a long-term lease to the hotel. The hotel owns the building itself, so why are we involved? Well, years ago, we were involved in a grant that helped build it, and then part of that is, it's a public garage. That is a public parking lot, just like City Hall parking lot is, just like the library 400 block. But obviously with being a structure, it's got a lot more challenges than just a simple paved parking lot. That's what the $3 pays for. So no city funds are used to maintain that garage, which is a great asset, so the fact that we have sufficient funds to keep, to keep the building in decent shape is a credit to all of us. But technically, we have no ownership interest, but we have an operating interest because you can go there for water fest, say, and you can stay in that garage, just like you can any other parking lot. So it's a good arrangement, a little complicated, as Fitz said, but it works, and the hotels are a great partner with us.
When was the last time that $3 was increased?
It was about 2015. We had, first three years was only two. I negotiated that, that was one of my little things I did with them, and that's, part of the agreement says that we have to verify that it's not neither too high nor too low. So that's why John made that point.
We had to do that by the end of this year, was to evaluate if that number was fair, and we've determined it is, the $3 a night will be sufficient.
So those costs for repairs haven't gone up, or maintenance?
No, because the projections that WGI put out there will be sufficient with the $3 a night projected out at the current rates of...
Yeah, we get about 85,000 a year coming in, and so depending on what goes out. And a couple of years ago, we spent 70,000, but right now, we're, we've been bankrolling a little bit.
We didn't have any repairs this year, but we will have scheduled repairs to do next year. So you'll be seeing a bid go up for that probably early '24, or '23.
Costs will go up and down, but we've got a, I think, what, about 400,000 in reserves right now?
Something like that.
Yeah, so we're in decent shape to handle whatever ebbs and flows happen with that garage.
Any other questions about the Convention Center ramp? Okay, good. Well, the last budget we have is on page 119, and it's facility maintenance. I'll give you a chance to get back to that. And, and while you're doing that, I'll just give you a little bit of an introduction about facilities maintenance. You know, in, in consideration of the council's support of facilities maintenance in the CIP budget, you know, we talked about this during strategic planning. The council has been very assertive in regarding making sure that our, our facilities are kept up to date. And, you know, they supported that work in the strategic plan with dedicating a portion of the CIP to facilities. And we very much appreciate that. I know you don't have an opportunity to hear that from staff, but on behalf of all the departments, you know, that commitment that you made in strategic planning and also the strategic management that you did in supporting those things in the budget was very much appreciated. And I think it was a very prudent decision. Because as we discussed, you know, we have over $65 million with the projects that we have on the docket for the next 10 years. So, so thank you for that. And in concert with that decision, we thought it was important for us operationally to make sure we could support that dedication of resources that the council put forward. So we talked about how we can make sure that we can accomplish that and we can do a good job internally to make sure that these facilities are supported and that the plans going forward are supported. So as a result of that, we've reallocated some facilities resources inside the organization to assist John and some of his staff to make sure that we are going to be able to accomplish all the projects that we have on, on our plate. So that's one of the reasons why you see some of these department heads in the back here. And, and I have to say that, you know, in the, in the entire time that I've been here, which has been quite a while, it's, I can't recall many, if any, times when departments have come to support another department in regard to staffing and budgetary. So I, I just want to thank them for being here, and that's why they're here behind us right now.
Well, Fitz, actually, they're there for Parks Department. Nobody said they were here to support you, so.
That's probably true, that's probably true. But anyway, with that long-winded introduction, we have a couple of enhancements related to this. Finance Director Van Gomple talked about it early on. One of the positions that we have is Facilities Project Coordinator. And that position is going to be funded through the projects themselves, much like we do when we have engineering work on different projects. So he's constructed a funding methodology in the budget to help support that position. And I don't know, Russ, if you want to talk about that real briefly?
No.
I think you already did. He covered it.
I think I covered it.
Pretty simple.
Basically, it's down in the bottom box on, oh. No, it's up above. Let me see, hold on a second.
Number eight?
Yeah, number eight.
Number eight.
Yep. I got it, when I read, did the thing, it got squished. Sorry about that.
So the whole point of that separation though, on that document, is to illustrate that it's not, it's got a separate funding source.
What's the funding source for it?
The funding sources are the projects themselves.
So.
Through the CIP?
Right.
Yeah, we'd run it through that CIP, Special Assessment Fund that we talked about yesterday.
Yeah.
The one where we have the clerical position in, in our staff. And we would account for it in that capital projects fund. But then, as the projects are done or completed, a portion of that time being charged for that project will go through this, the project itself. But the overhead, the actual baseline will be recorded in that Special Assessment Fund.
Okay, so it'd be a combination of something being tacked on to Special Assessments, which would be small, I would think, some debt, depending on how something was funded and some ARPA?
Um, no, basically, it'd be each project that that coordinator would work on, his, his time to that project will be charged to that project. So if that project's funded by debt, yes.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And, you know, unfortunately, the idea behind this position is to support all other departments as we move forward. There's a lot of logistics and responsibility associated with building projects, from temporary relocation to phasing, to working with contractors, to, it's just a myriad of things. Unfortunately, this position won't be on board to help Parks Director Maurer with all the things that he's shouldering right now in addition to his responsibilities. But going forward in the future with the other projects that we have planned, I think this position is really going to be invaluable as a, as a support piece to the other departments as we go forward with some of the improvements that the council saw fit to, to fund. John, you want to talk about this a little bit more?
Yeah, we wouldn't anticipate this position would ever replace a, the participation of the departments involved with the particular projects. They're going to be right there with this person the entire way. They're going to be skilled and knowledgeable in many of these projects to a greater degree than department heads probably are now, to be able to assist and find ways to keep costs down, competitive, et cetera. So we see this as a great asset moving forward with the, with all the facility projects we've got planned in the, in the next 10 years. We see this person as being someone that can really aid department heads in, in getting their projects done on time and competitive as possible. So that's the real gain with this kind of a, a position for the city.
Any questions about that particular position or anything specific to that? Okay, so in addition to the Facilities Maintenance Project Coordinator, as I mentioned, different people who have different responsibilities that are housed in other departments right now are going to be relocated. And John and, John and his staff are going to help guide those individuals to help support those facility projects that we have going forward. So, for example, we have a plumber in the Parks Department. We have some Facilities Maintenance folks that are in other departments like Museum. And there are some departments that don't have any support at all or don't have any planned support for some of the new buildings, from a facilities perspective, to a grounds perspective, to also light, maintenance and construction perspective. So that's really part of this. We just thought, and we talked about it as a team with City Manager Roloff, that we wouldn't be doing a responsible job with the commitment the council made unless we took a look at ourselves, a hard look at ourselves, and planned ahead to match that commitment the council has seen fit to provide.
Would this also accommodate the Fire Department? I know that that was a request for the Fire Department in the past. Was for a specific maintenance person for their buildings?
Yes, and, you know, I'm sorry, to back up even a little bit more. I think, you know, just like most organizations, when we were a small city, there weren't any staff to be able to take care of any of the responsibilities. And then as the city grew, each department was responsible for their own area. But I think we're at a point now where we're a city of significant size. And to ask those departments to take on those responsibilities when they have very little time or any expertise to manage any of those things, I think it was just the right time for us to consolidate those resources, be a little more efficient. And we talked about some consolidation of resources yesterday when we were talking a little bit about GIS. To ha, to have positions scattered throughout the city, it makes it difficult for those positions to have support and realize economies of scale. And we're not duplicating services by having these people all consolidated. You know, John is very modest, he and his staff, in terms of what they've done over time. But as time has gone on, John and his staff kind of de facto help departments right now, even though it's not necessarily their formal responsibility. And this effort kind of formalizes those actions.
I'll, I'll just share with you, Assistant Chief Bending is in the back. He can certainly attest to this. But in the history of the Fire Department, there used to be an old adage, well, I can't hire you because you're not a plumber. Because they, they, they had the crafts amongst their own ranks. And so literally, they'd have a carpenter, a plumber, an electrician to take care of the firehouse. That has, that, that ship has needed to sail because we train our people to be very, you know, to be very dedicated to what they do. Just last week, a pipe burst over at the main station and on the second floor flooded down. Firefighters are out there mopping it up. Now, they're good team players, they do that stuff.
Absolutely.
But just one example, and that same thing could happen at the museum, or the senior center, or the library. And when something like that happens, John Urban has to, you know, get whatever hands he has on deck, on deck. So to the point about the Fire Department, it's fire and, and, and so many others. So that's, it's reached a point where we need to have it more centralized so we can put all hands on deck wherever that problem may exist. And just do general maintenance. There's, there's nobody who does basic mopping at some of these places because we just don't have that person. It's just, but, and I was asked the question, you know, why are all these people here? Because they're the ones who are experiencing this, and they're getting professional people. I mean, sometimes you get, you get an equipment operator to handle things over at the public works garage or somebody over at the parks and stuff like that. But centralizing this might make more sense.
Well, the other piece of this, we, we talked to City Manager Roloff in this after we talked as a group of departments about, you know, how to structure this and what to, how to just form the plan. And in addition to the position that we talked about, we're asking for another position, a Facilities Maintenance Technician position. And that's an enhancement that you'll see in your package, too. I think the idea, John, is to start this as a partial position or partway through the year and then try to go on beyond that. We would have, we have future ideas in terms of additional crafts people that we'd like to add in future years, but that's not something that we felt comfortable asking you or talking to you about at this time. But in order to, to, to do a job and make this successful, we thought that these two positions initially were ones that we wanted to go forward with. You want to talk a little bit more about that, John?
Sure, John's talking about budget enhancement number three for the Facility Maintenance Technician. The idea there would be we would have this one person help fill the, the gap, the void, if you will, of many of the maintenance issues we identified in several buildings, including all the firehouses, the Field Operations Center, the new Parks Administration Building and the new Parks Four Seasons Building. There really aren't anyone assigned to do these areas and to do them in a very centralized, organized fashion. So our intent here was to suggest this budget enhancement so that this person could start. And then really, you know, we could use this first year or so to kind of figure out, you know, what we need to do in these buildings, how we can streamline it, how we can take advantages of economies of scale and so forth. Because it is important, we want to keep these buildings maintained, we want to keep them looking good. And, and it's a challenge right now for many of these departments. That's why they're here. They, they have to use their own staff or they have to outsource it sometimes. But we think we can, and, and just make it a better process and a better system to, to take care of these buildings.
So with that, that, those are the only enhancements that we have associated with this, this time. And we can get into the budget itself. And I've probably talked a little bit too long already, but I'll turn it over to John to, to talk about facilities maintenance and what we do and how we do it.
So currently, Facility Maintenance is, is in charge of.
Page please.
Page 119. Is in charge of the City Hall building itself, the safety building across the street, both senior center, north and south. They also manage the lease, the maintenance lease obligations at the Convention Center and the Grand Opera House. We also help take care of the Sawyer Storage Building that's used by PD and many other departments. And we also take care of the Third Avenue Police Storage Facilities there as well. In recent years, as John alluded to, we always want to be a team player, so we'll help out other departments as needed. That's just, I know a lot of departments do that and we, we can, we'd like to also offer that back. So we've been helping out with a lot of other larger projects of CIP and appreciate the council's support with the CIP projects that we've got planned coming up. So we, we do spend time doing that. And going back to the budget enhancement, that's where that project coordinator can really assist us. Because when we're looking at 10 years of $65 million with the projects, that will really be a great help to the departments and our, and our department in helping keep those projects managed and, and competitive and, and keeping things on track, so. But, so again, we, we do various maintenance, custodial grounds, things for these buildings. We've had several major projects this year alone. In City Hall, you've seen a lot of updates to various areas for our security improvements. We continue to manage the HVAC and roofing program for all the buildings. That's been going well and appreciate all the department's help with those projects. There's just various projects throughout City Hall, as you can see there. Senior Center, we've got a few things coming up with the Senior Center North Building, Reception Desk there. And a big project that we plan to continue tracking on will be the ADA improvements. That's in the CIP, and we'll be working to, with the departments to help manage getting those, starting to get those addressed as, as was identified and so forth. We've got a lot of various CIP projects coming up that's next year we'll be working on. Elevators, generators, so forth, I talked about the ADA. We see cross-training, something that we want to really need to make time to do. We found that to be a great benefit in the past with many areas. And with many of these changes coming up, we, we recognize that cross-training our folks is, is going to continue to be important. So we're going to put an emphasis on that as well. And then cold storage, our City Hall Cold Storage Building across the street here is, is very much in need of a, of an update. It's, it needs to be reorganized. I think we want to clean it up more than it is now. And it's just one of those things that we know is there and we've got to get to it. So we're going to make that a priority for next year as well, so. That's just kind of a quick recap of, of our facilities. I'd be happy to go in any more detail.
And, and John is also prepared to talk about any CIP projects that you have, but we thought we could go into those in any great detail unless the council would just delve into those or ask any questions about the CIP projects. Mayor?
Just one question, and that is, so I've seen on several pieces that we're doing either elevator replacements or repair. So this says, for this, it would be for the safety building, the Convention Center. Why wouldn't we also do like the grand or the museum that were mentioned?
Well, as a matter of fact, I'm glad you brought that up because, you know, one of the things that we have discovered in terms of, you know, the whole concept of everybody taking care of their own thing with departments, there's a lot of duplication of contracts. Oftentimes, we have different vendors for different elevators or life safety equipment, where if we were consolidated and looking at it from a comprehensive perspective, we could not only make it more efficient, update it, but then save money. That's the whole idea behind it. And in terms of the projects that we have in the docket, to your question more directly, can you speak to that?
Right, the reason the safety building and Convention Center, there's actually two of the safety building, one of the Convention Center. The reason we're combining those is for that very point that John said is if we can put all three out there, it'll be able to maximize a better, a better bid in the long run. As far as the, the maintenance program, as John said, when you have a maintenance agreement, sometimes they expire at different years. So part of this overall strategy would be, can we find opportunities to maybe shorten some of these up to again, bring the maintenance programs into the same contract terms? So then we can put them all out to bid and then leverage that to get a better price. So the reason you're seeing these three here is simply these need to be replaced and they're at their end of life.
But I, I think we, we also talked about, I think just a few minutes ago, the grand needing some lift elevator replacement also.
Yeah, that's.
Are they under a different category?
That's a wheelchair lift, it's, it's not an elevator. It's, it's, it's that one in the lobby that, so it's kind of a different animal to this.
Yep.
And that actually is the. And that actually is the top priority that we're working on with the ADA. That's coming out of the ADA fund itself, so.
Yeah, I guess I'm feeling a centralization theme here. I mean, I've seen it all through my business life, so, and, you know, I caution you that when you go centralization, you get pet projects that don't get taken care of, and then people push for decentralization under the next regime and everything. So I just want you to be careful, not be careful, but just advise you to walk into these waters cautiously, because we've seen councils come and go, we've seen city managers come and go, no different than a company president or chief financial officer, and they all have different thought processes. So, I mean, but it seems like we're talking a centralization move here overall. Is that safe to say?
Absolutely, and I think that's an excellent point, Councilmember Miller. I think, you know, this has been a very slow process, you know, in the 20-plus years I've been here. I think John and his staff have tried to help out as much as they could all through that time period. And, you know, we wouldn't be recommending this unless the rest of the departments were comfortable with this, were on board for the very points that you made, which were right on point. I wanted to make sure that this is something that they felt comfortable with and that they supported. And that's where we started with this. I know John is very self-conscious about, not only with facilities maintenance, but also when we provide public information through Oshkosh Media, you know, we don't want anybody to think we're trying to run their department. You know, we're here to serve them. We understand that's our role and our responsibility, and I think we work on that very carefully. And John, you want to expand on that?
Yeah, I think, I think one good example of how we try to navigate it, and I think we've navigated it relatively well, is the HVAC roofing program that started years ago. City Manager Roloff began that process, because prior to him making that recommendation, departments would come up individually in the CIP, make their case for their roof was worse than this roof, and their HVAC was worse than... And so by consolidating that, I think it was 10-plus years ago under us. I mean, everything's prioritized, we take the politics out of it a little bit in terms of the lobbying that you might have gotten in the past. And so I'd like to think this is a good, you know, it's been a good, you know, base of comparison of how we can navigate this move forward.
And I would say too, and you're right, you know, leaders can come and go, but one of the, one of the common themes that City Manager Roloff emphasizes with us as departments is, you know, we're a team, and we need to think about it that way. We need to think about what's best for the city always. You know, we're all responsible for our own departments, but the city is the number one priority. And I think that's part of this theme, the other departments buy into that, and that's what has helped move this forward in the way that it has.
And I would say that we also have to be practical about those things. A good example is I don't envision our electrical operations getting centralized. We're not big enough. Well, technically, our electrical are centralized, you wouldn't be centralized with facilities maintenance. For example, if you heard some noise out in the hallway, that's our electricians finishing up the electrical. Their primary duty are streetlights and traffic signals, but they're also our in-house electricians. They're going to need to stay at an in-house electrical unit. So I don't see them moving into facilities like, say, a plumber or something like that. We only have one plumber in the city organization, but we have multiple electricians because of all our signals. So it's not centralized all the time. So, and I'm a little uneasy with this discussion about changing leadership.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's like, and Matt just sent me an email saying, we need to work on your review. So I'm feeling a little uneasy, but...
Wild afternoon.
Yeah, but...
Yeah, you missed the banker's box.
Yeah, I did.
I thought we were hearing those trails in the background for added emphasis for the conversation.
Yeah, and it was, well, the door was wide open, so.
Yes.
But those are our electricians, and that's, you know, they, now, if there was a traffic signal out, they'd be out of the building right away. It's like, we'll be back, we'll finish the job, but they got to, their priority is public safety first and foremost. But are we going to centralize an electrician there? It wouldn't make sense, because we need those electricians out on the street doing public safety stuff.
So we asked Museum to come up at 11:15. Are we almost, I see they're here, are we almost finished? Does anybody have more questions?
Any more questions? The only other thing I, you know, if you have any questions, the departments, you don't have to take all this from me, you're certainly welcome to ask them, they're here to answer any questions about this reorganization project also.
I guess I'd just like to ask the Parks Department with the new building, or even Central Garage, it's new-ish, right? Decade, within the decade. When you have those, you know, with the new construction, once it's completed, you know, there's always those things that haven't quite been completely fixed. Do you see being able to share with, like, the Fire Department? And how do you guys decide what the priority will be? You know, if there's a sprinkler, I mean, the crisis that was described at the station, and then maybe some hour issue? I mean, how do you, how do you guys see working together on who needs what in the priority end of it?
I can start out, because James and I have had this discussion probably for two and a half years, when our new building was coming online or being discussed to come online, because I knew that James, obviously having their new facility, and he contracts out a cleaning service, I believe. And so we had discussions, do we continue to jump onto that same contract with facilities' staff or the facilities' operations center, and they had our parks? Or is it better for us to look at a full-time person just for us? And then we started looking, well, if we have them at our complex, are they needed for seven or eight hours? We have the senior center right there. So that's where we started having more conversations with John and John on more centralization. As far as a dedicated person, I'm going to use the plumber, for example. We have the only master plumber in the city, or in city staff. I think it makes sense, we had that discussion with John Urban, that there are times, spring, when we are starting up the pool, they need to know in advance, we need the plumber there to help with these things, certain things in our park restrooms, and certain times that we made clear to John, that's going to have to be a priority. So we've been very upfront with that, and I'm sure other departments have as well on some of those things. So we're trusting him, he's got that background. And I think with all the staff being right there, John can disperse as he sees the priorities and work with us. We work very closely together on all department issues, so.
I don't know if you want to add something first, Brian?
Yeah, I agree, it works real well for us. Matter of fact, we're waiting on Dan right now for this water leak, or urine leak to be made over for us. We use Dan almost on a weekly basis throughout the city for something. That's broken in one of the firehouses. So it's a good collaboration, it works real well, so I think it's only a positive thing moving forward, so. But it's kind of a, back to your question, it's based off need. If it's an emergency, he'll get over as quickly as he can, and I book that through Chad through Parks, and it works real well that way, so.
Yeah, I think, as Ray mentioned, you know, right now, we have a service coming in three days a week to field operations to do those types of practices. And, you know, I've been working with John Urban and his group for the past year now of slowly transitioning some of the, some things that we could to start incorporating the facilities maintenance. You know, for example, the previous manager over there kept, you know, kept all the building keys and kept the whole key inventory and all the paperwork for all that. I'm like, I don't need a manager doing that, that's, you know, John Urban's got people that do that for all of the buildings. You know, so I've started that shift towards utilizing their staff to help out, you know, again, using the right person for the right job. I don't need a high-level manager managing the keys. I don't need, you know, Travis as the mechanics division manager trying to coordinate getting an elevator fixed, or a door fixed, or something like that. So there are a lot of these things that I think, you know, consolidating into the facilities maintenance group, not only does it, you know, it gives more, more ability to get things done, but it gives you a larger pool. You know, right now, I've got one facilities maintenance person that's bouncing back and forth between water filtration and water distribution. When that person goes on vacation, either, you know, supervisory staff, operators will pick up staff, or it just sits there until that person gets back. You know, by centralizing that group, you know, if we've got somebody who's out for a week or two, somebody else can come over and do those things. So establishing that pool of people to do those tasks and projects, I think is going to make us more efficient in the long run.
If I could add on, obviously, our station's a little bit unique, because we're in there 24/7, so the custodial staff's a little bit different. Our guys can take care of that on a daily basis, because we're doing that, we've always done that. But when it comes to HVAC, the plumbing, the garage doors, all that kind of stuff, I mean, literally half my job is dealing with a broken garage door, dishwasher, electrical agent, I mean, it's this nonstop. If we can get a more centralized person to kind of manage that and take some of that off my plate, I can go back and take care of farm marshal duties and actually look at new construction and all that stuff that's coming to the town. So I think it's a, it's a great thing.
Thank you.
Fitz, I got one, one last question for you, if you don't mind, just on your enhancement, your prescription safety glasses. I haven't seen that one before in my time, so is this, is this not something we can try to incorporate into, into our vision insurance plan in some fashion?
Yeah, we, we actually did request it last year. I don't know if it got a lot of feet underneath it. But the, and the enhancement amount is assuming every eligible person were to get prescription safety glasses this year. We are aware of one of our neighboring municipalities does have it as part of their vision plan. We have not looked into that at this time, but it would definitely be something that I could look further into. Again, you know, of course, those who do take our vision plan have to pay for it 100%. So our vision plan is paid for by the employees, it's not supplemented by the city. Our intent was to obviously help people get prescription safety glasses, so that we can ensure that they can be more compliant, not have to wear those uncomfortable goggles on top of their regular glasses, which of course, you know, we want to ensure they're compliant, number one, but we also want to ensure they're effective when they're trying to do their jobs.
And just to piggyback on Michelle's comments and back to your question, Matt, you know, we have a variety of employees that may or may not be on our insurance, too. So we wanted to make sure that that wasn't a barrier to people being safe and getting the right equipment, if they chose to be on their spouse's health insurance or vision insurance. So we just thought that this would be a way to kind of cut across all those areas to make sure that folks were doing the right thing.
Thank you.
What was the dollar a month, Fitz?
I think it was about $32,000, something like that.
Yeah, $31,800. And again, that estimate is assuming every single person would get a pair this year. Obviously, it would be every two years, first of all, so although there would be an initial larger amount, I'm sure getting them than that, that amount overall, you know, is going to average probably about $15,000 a year or less.
Little startup money at first would be a little bit more.
Would you be okay phasing this in over two years? Half the people, you know, I mean, I'm just, I'm throwing it out there, you know, you know how tight the budget is, so I mean, or is this one of those deals where, where it's just out of power logistically?
Go ahead, Michelle.
We certainly could start with some areas first and implement over two years. That way, obviously, it would equalize a little bit more each year, because if the alternative is not having it, we certainly would enjoy an opportunity to phase it in.
And I just wanted to make sure it wasn't one of those deals where council thinks they're doing the right thing, and all of a sudden we're sabotaging a project by cutting it in half. So that's, that was the only reason for my question. Thank you.
Hey, anything else, Administrative Services? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So now we juggled the schedule a little bit, and Ms. Phillips and her staff juggled their schedule so they could be here and...
And you get the extra 10 minutes that Fitz took away. We'll, we'll stay, we'll stay into the lunch hour, or you're not cut short.
But if we smell tacos in the other room, I don't know. Well, you know, there's, that's always a possibility. I wouldn't, I wouldn't rule that out.
Well, thank you guys for rearranging. We went, well, we were ahead of schedule until Mr. Miller showed up today.
Exactly. She is 100% accurate, it is my fault, so.
Well, thank you all for having us a little bit early. I know we're right before lunch, so really, I just want to hit three main things. But before I get into that, I wanted to mention the three funds that together make up our annual operating budget, and we'll start from smallest to largest. The first is the collections fund on page 241. This is used exclusively for the care and acquisition of collections material. It's funded through donations, through the sale of deaccession material from the collection. In 2022, it supported the conservation of objects for an upcoming long-term exhibition. And in '23, we hope to support the conservation of two large pieces, a mural in the Sawyer Home, or, excuse me, a mural and the Sawyer Home original tapestry, as well as continuing the work for the conservation and reproduction of the Dutchman blanket. That's a piece that will be on exhibit in Deep Roots Growing City and People of the...
Oh, no, it's in People of the Waters.
People of the Waters, excuse me. The membership fund is our next account on page 235. This fund augments the primary museum fund through entrepreneurial efforts, paid membership, paid programming, that kind of thing. In 2022, it paid for three LTE positions, as well as the three exhibitions, White Christmas, Helen Farnsworth Mirrors, Genius of Wisconsin, and Manufacturing Victory. In '23, we are looking to use the membership fund to continue support of LTE positions and also support public engagement to create some robust public programming to further our educational efforts. The museum fund on page 237 of your budget books. This is the primary city-supported fund. In '22, in addition to general operations, it supported the development of This is Winnebago Land, the long-term exhibition that will be opening soon. And in '23, we'll continue to develop work to cultivate our education program, as well as work to dismantle and de-install over 300 artifacts to renovate the Memories and Dreams Gallery, which is on the second floor of the museum, to create a rotating exhibition space in its place. So that way, we will have a more versatile gallery to host exhibitions that will drive a lot of public interest. For all of these funds, I've taken a very conservative approach for our 2023 budget, and that is all due to the fact that 2023 is going to be a year for laying a lot of groundwork for the museum for the future, which is all driven by creating relevance and impact within our community. So that kind of gets me to some of the main points that I want to make, but I want to kind of provide an opportunity for any questions on the funds before I dive in. I have a head shake, so I'll continue on. The first thing that I want to emphasize is Deep Roots Growing City. You can see it listed on page 417 of the CIP. Over the past couple years, in fiscal years '21 and '22, council has approved a combined $300,000 for this exhibition already. Although we don't plan on opening this exhibit until 2026, we'll be working over the next year to curate various aspects of this exhibition. We really want to make sure that we're defining ourselves within the community as a place of history and culture, and making sure that the content that's part of this exhibition addresses the needs of our visitors and represents the community in a way that we can all be very proud of. This exhibit is a continuation of People of the Waters, which is on that entry level of the museum. It carries the story forward through time, all the way up to present day. That content is being created with stakeholders. We really are looking to deepen relationship with tribal leaders and community members. We really are looking to deepen relationship with tribal leaders and community members. And within the relationships that we've already developed with our tribal liaisons, we want to make sure that we're telling a story of their lived experience in a way that's very inclusive and accurately representing their lived experience. So this exhibit is really taking an approach with not just the indigenous peoples of the area, but current-day community members to make sure that our philosophy for it is about you, not without you, if that makes sense. We want to make sure that we're bringing everyone into the fold. But in order to do this and in order to achieve that goal, we have to actually adapt the physical spaces. So I mentioned dismantling Memories and Dreams up on our second floor. If you refer back to the CIP pages 470 and 471, you'll see general purpose room and loading doors both listed. Next year, we'll start to renovate that second floor. The loading doors will create crate access, so we'll be able to get these bigger exhibitions into our facility, create a new temporary gallery space, so that way we can start rotating exhibits through more frequently and just in general, making a more functional space for everyone. The first exhibition that we're going to put in the renovated space is focused on the museum centennial. It'll celebrate the gift of the Sawyer Home to the community and citizens of Oshkosh. It's also the kickoff for introducing a new interpretive plan for the Sawyer Home itself. One of the things that I have really enjoyed since arriving in Oshkosh is sharing what a special place the Sawyer Home actually is, because most people don't know what's been here this whole time. The Tiffany interiors, the stained glass window, that's really iconic, the tapestry, the stained glass archway at the entryway of the museum, the woodwork and all the finishes really put the museum in an extraordinarily rare seat in the history of American art. We are one of only two Tiffany commissions known to still exist worldwide. 100% of the work that was done for the Sawyer Home was done exclusively for the Sawyer Home and literally do not exist anywhere else in the world. So we are in a very unique position. No other museum has the collections to explore this region's anthropological perspectives, gives a voice to local indigenous people today, explore industry and business that have built our modern-day community, and be able to talk about the unique history of American arts through the lens of Tiffany. It's really special to think that we can do all of that in one place at one time for our visitors. So in order to do it right, though, we need an educator. You can see our budget enhancement request on page 33 and 35. I'm going to quickly pass around just an analysis paper on what a curator of education does. I know it sounds a little like a foreign term, so I wanted to make sure everyone understood the routing of this position request. Take one and pass it around. This is how the donuts should go, too. Take one and pass it around.
They don't get past the fat guy.
We'll start it over here.
So you're saying I'm last?
You're last. Saving the best for last. So like I had mentioned, the city has invested a great deal of money into our exhibitions, particularly over the last 10 years with the investment for Deep Roots Growing City, but also with People of the Waters. But in that decade, it's really important to note that we have not had a museum educator. What makes this position so essential is the need to reach teachers where they're at. A museum needs to have a solid, ongoing understanding of curriculum standards, formal and informal learning systems, and the ability to translate all of that into exhibitions and extrapolate that out of exhibitions. To advance the museum and maximize the financial investment the city has already made, we need somebody to be able to put all of this together. One of the things, kind of a sidebar, one of the things the museum provides is free field trips for OASD students. And I think it's really important to note to everyone here that most museums don't offer free visits like that. We've been able to provide free passes to groups like the Boys and Girls Club and to families that participate in virtual field trips that the museum hosts, and we've been able to fund those tickets through receiving sponsorships for family programming. Sometimes schools will only be free in other communities if they're Title I or deemed low income. I've also worked with museums that require a family show an EBT card to show that they're on assistance for free admission. I am very proud that we can provide a free learning experience to local students regardless of their socioeconomic status and do it in a way that feels very respectful and very inclusive to everyone. But even with those free field trips, the classes were not coming to the museum, and that's because teachers couldn't align their lessons with our exhibits. So we have already seen what happens in the museum if we don't have an educator. Over the last 10 years, the museum has struggled to have a voice within our school districts. We literally have award-winning exhibitions that don't line up with classroom learning because we never had this person specialized to make sure that everything is in place. We've lost out on serving over 10,000 students from this area alone. So to create meaning for our schools, we need somebody that understands both the museum experience and classroom instruction to work to put it all together. In conversations that I've had with Dr. Davis and some of the school district staff, they've called this the missing link. So over the last year, I've redirected museum staff resources to really focus on education, and we've been able to accomplish quite a bit over the past year. You may have heard, we're hosting field trips from all OASD third-grade classes, so we have hundreds and hundreds of third graders, chaperones, and teachers gearing up to start coming through the museum next week. We've improved our offerings and started working very closely with OASD school district staff to create lesson plans that directly connect their curriculum standards to our exhibit content, and people are, are hearing about it. There's starting to be a buzz within the education community. Teachers from other school districts, like the Menominee Indian School, have started reaching out to contact us about field trips, how our staff and our exhibits can help support what their classroom is learning about, and really start to link together the ideas that kids are learning in the classroom to a tangible portion of history that the museum showcases every day. So we're off to a great new beginning, but we need expertise to be able to sustain it long-term. All of these things, so Deep Roots Growing City, the Centennial, and the reimagining of the Tiffany interpretation within the Sawyer House, and our education program are all coming together to move the museum and the focus of the city together and forward in a very relevant way within our community. I've said this before to a number of people, but although the museum is in the business of history, we have to look to the future to create impact and adapt to the needs of our current-day public. So ours is a place for stories, for culture, and community, and we need to serve our community in a way that provides meaning to them. I thank you for your time. Would love any questions. I saw a microphone move.
Two things. One, I appreciate this. This is helpful when, when hearing about new positions. But two, I'm, I'm excited and thankful to hear that they renewed partnership with the school district is putting kids in that building. That's, that's a good thing.
Yes.
No, so just those two, those two comments, just real basics, so thank you.
Well, thank you. One of the early conversations city manager Roloff and I had, he said, "Your job is to get kids in through the door." And I promised him I would do that, shaking his head. So we're there, we're there.
And so my, my comment, question really is a follow-up to that, and that is, how many people are on the museum board?
There's a total of nine.
Nine. And I guess, you know, my question is, you know, is there an opportunity has, has the school district, and maybe this is something council can speak to at an upcoming joint meeting with the school district, in potentially sharing this position in some way? And/or, you know, is the museum board, are there folks on there that are working board members who we have, you know, potentially volunteer docents to help supplement some of the tasks oriented around this? And I guess, you know, these are probably things that have already been discussed, but just right off the bat, just those are my questions.
No, and those are great questions. We do have board members who act as docents for our education programs currently. One of the things is, as I was thinking about the education program specifically for the museum, there's always opportunities to look at partnerships with OASD, but I want to make sure that the education program of the museum is fulfilling a mission outside of just that exclusive portion. The museum's mission is not just Oshkosh, but within the region, and I want to make sure that our educational programming is relevant outside of the region as well, and it doesn't become pigeonholed as to an extension of OASD. So we're serving a larger community than that, and it gives us an opportunity to not just engage with outside school districts, but to bolster some of the city's initiatives. I think specifically DEAI. This position is in a really unique role that if they were to serve on city communities, they could kind of help deliver that in a way that is very specific to the mission of the city and the strategic plan of the city versus maybe having some of their work diluted, so to speak, by things dedicated exclusively to the school district and achieving school district goals.
Anybody else?
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You didn't need to hire guns, huh?
Well, these guys have the history, so I'm still the newbie.
I guess I do have one follow-up question, and that is, so just before you brought this, we were speaking about the facility maintenance. I'm, I'm assuming that many of the facility maintenance needs are very specific with sensitivities in terms of historic preservation and that, but what are your thoughts about some of the shared basic facility maintenance worker sharing?
Yeah, I am cautiously optimistic. One of the things that I think is a strength for consolidating that team is a pool of talented individuals. The Sawyer Home has a really quirky and unique structure to it that I think requires training that not every member of the staff has, but it puts us in a position where the opportunity to train other staff to be competent in those areas is really prevalent. The other half of that, like you mentioned, is cleaning in the galleries, that we would have to make sure that our lines of communication between the museum and that staff would have to be open and very clear. But I've talked to John, Michelle, Terry, you know, everybody that may be involved in that, and I feel confident that those folks understand kind of the unique situation of the museum. The two staff that are currently at the museum that would be affected by it had some really good questions that they were able to ask quite clearly and openly, and they had that answer and our assurances that, you know, things could be very shared and discussed and part of a conversation versus the museum being an offshoot because it's a whole different situation than a building like City Hall was passed on to us, that it would still be a priority when, when it came up, so.
Thank you.
I was going to point out that in the CIP, Ms. Phillips and her staff, the CIP, almost more than any department, except maybe Streets, which does a very detailed program, if you look at the progression of the project, you really need to take a look at five, six years with, with the museum's CIPs. They've realigned them so that logically, it's going to work better. Getting the, the door on the second floor, getting that done before we do any of this other stuff just makes sense because once you have that door, then you can get exhibits in and out. It'll just make it so much easier so that when they get Deep Roots Growing City done, you know, that was originally, if you recall, that was going to be in '23, but they moved it back, and not just because it's more money, but also because logically, once that door opens, that once we have that access, Sarah and her staff will be able to get these exhibits out so much easier, and it'll be, it'll, they'll be closed for a shorter time, or it'll be, they can get an exhibit in and out literally in a couple of days. Tell them how much work it took for you to do just the, the World War II exhibit.
Yeah, we actually had to close the museum to the public in order to create a ramp up the front stairs to get these gigantic crates with exhibetry up, and then some of the crates were too large to fit on our regular elevator, so we had to unload the crates in the hallways and then take pieces up individually. So this eliminates the need to, to have to do that, to piece it all together.
And then there's time to, we have to allow exhibit crates to acclimate to the environment, especially when we're moving between, like these were coming from Louisiana, a little bit different climate than Wisconsin, so we usually have to give it a 24-hour period to acclimate so it doesn't negatively affect the collections. And so this will allow us a space and ability to do that, not in the hallway on the first floor, you know, and that will impede access to visitors. So this will make it more efficient for us to not just get things in and out, but also just the entire process.
I think Mayor Paul Mary can attest to this because weeks ago, we hosted the representatives of the Menominee Tribe and just showing them the logic of how this is done, the Deep Roots Growing City being the next generation of permanent exhibits that we have. You go through the first floor, do People of the Waters get up to the second floor? And then, oh, by the way, while you're here, now we've got this great traveling exhibit or temporary exhibit type of thing. It really does blend in well and gives us a lot of opportunities to use other items that are in our collection.
Do we end up losing Granny's attic?
Granny's going to retire.
Two generations, no, three generations have gone through that.
But I will say, you know, we, we've worked up with Deep Roots Growing City up into the, what's called the schematic design phase, where we're just really talking about rough themes. And part of our conversation in, in developing Deep Roots was the loss of that tactile learning and engagement in that way. We knew that that would be an outcry of, but, you know, it's a beloved exhibit, but it, it definitely has very, it has a, a passenger pigeon on display, and that's an extremely rare specimen, for example, and it needs to be rested. But we were thinking of ways to, think of engagement in the 21st century and have that tactile learning. So some of the elements that we're hoping to implement in Deep Roots Growing City can recapture that in some way, maybe not quite as immersive as a fun attic, but still having that ability to have hands-on engagement.
Just one last question. Mike, did I cut you off?
No.
How are the numbers looking post-COVID and, and things like that? People threw the door and everything. I, just curiosity.
We did very well, given the circumstances. I mean, COVID was, we were closed in 2020 from March till about July, and then we reopened and had capacity limits, so numbers, numbers were in 2020 very low. We had very minimal engagement compared to previous years, especially over the holidays. We also postponed what, for us, is a blockbuster exhibition in Titanic to 2021. So we had three very popular exhibitions with capacity limits enforced during a time when people were still figuring out their comfort levels. So given all that, our numbers were very good. For Titanic, for example, we serviced about 10,000 visitors. We were hoping for more, but given the circumstances, we were very pleased. In a time where a lot of institutions, a lot of museums and cultural institutions were struggling or not even open, we did very well. So for the beginning of 2021, Nostalgia Awakens, which was that Star Wars toy exhibit, serviced about 5,000 visitors. Titanic was about 10,000, and White Christmas was about 8,000. So that's a good number, given the circumstances. So I, I, I'm very pleased with that, because I have a lot of friends in the museum field and watching what they went through, we were very fortunate.
Thank you.
Got you out of time for lunch.
Looking forward to Dia de los Muertos.
Yes, October 29th, we're having a day-long Dia de los Muertos, Day of the Dead celebration, so.
All the good energy for good weather.
Yes, yeah. Think about sunny weather.
First ever in the city.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We have fire at one, and lunch is ready in the, over in my office, so.